Good evening and welcome to the October 21st Board of Education meeting for the enlarged City School District of Middletown. I'd like everyone to stand, and Mrs. Blumenau, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the Lord, America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
And I failed to ask you to remain standing. Mr. Perino has a moment of silence.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tobiasin. This moment of silence this evening is for General Colin Powell, an American hero and an inspiration. He was born in Harlem to Jamaican immigrants. His parents settled in the South Bronx, graduated from City College of New York, joined the U.S. Army and became a four-star general, served two terms in Vietnam. General Powell was the first Black American Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. He was the first Black American National Security Advisor to President Ronald Reagan. And in his memoirs, "It Worked For Me," he emphasized the value of hard work and determination. He also was able to admit mistakes, which I found very, very enlightening. He admitted he made a mistake on Iraq, which he said was largely due to faulty intelligence. General Powell, really, an inspiration to all students. It shows you what hard work can do. He was not born to a wealthy family, but he managed to succeed, held a number of government positions. And if we're ever thinking, if this district is ever thinking of naming this wonderful new media center after someone, Colin Powell would be an excellent choice. So please remember that General Colin Powell, former Secretary of State, Secretary of Defense, and advisor to numerous presidents, praised by Republican and Democratic presidents alike, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Clark, may I have roll call, please?
Mitch, I'm sorry.
Would you give us the mission statement?
Yes, we strive to provide a fiscally sound educational opportunities and a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mitch. Mr. Williams. Roll call, Ms. Clark.
Mrs. Blumenau.
Here.
Mr. Crescendo.
Here.
Mr. Gomez.
Here.
Mrs. Houston.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Ms. Tobiasin.
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams. Pastor Williams. Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. Clark, was President Williams going to try to join us or not? Beloved President, John Williams is ill at home, and I ask all of you here to remember him and his family in your prayers. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to change something on the agenda first?
I first need a motion.
So move.
Thank you. I need a second. John, did you second?
I'm a second.
Discussion.
Yes. The roundtable and community reports have been jumbled into one category, which limits our time to speak. So it's always been at the beginning of the meeting or toward the front of the meeting. I'd like to see it moved back. That's the motion I'm making.
I'll second that.
Hearing none.
I have discussion. I think it's important that everyone, as a board member or a community member, has the right to speak their voice based under the First Amendment of the Constitution. And an effort to group those together limits our time additionally, because we are already timed four minutes apiece, and that limits us to four minutes instead of eight minutes per meeting. That's my discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Houston, number 12, refers to the board members only for roundtable and community reports. It does not refer to the community.
I'm aware of that, Mrs. Tobiasin, but you are censoring us by changing that on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Crescendo.
Would it be a simple solution to make it eight minutes instead of four minutes? Would that suit your needs?
No, she wants the community there.
No, no, no. Our report, our community report, and our roundtable, not the public.
I'm fine with Mr. Crescendo's suggestion. I just don't want to be censored any more than I already am to the four minutes. I'd rather it be eight minutes, please. Thank you.
To add to my opinion or suggestion, we go around in community reports for four minutes each, then we start it again with roundtable.
Sounds good to me. Thank you. Great suggestion.
Thank you.
I just have a question with respect to my colleagues. Whose idea was it to move community reports, which have been during my tenure as a board member, all the way to the end and then group them with roundtable, which sometimes we don't do because of timing and late in the night?
There had been discussion on a new format for the meeting. I was called last week on Friday. I take full responsibility, and I moved the recognitions up. I felt that it was unfair to keep the recognitions to sit through our meeting. I moved that up, and I moved the opportunity to address up. Because as one community member did point out when he came to the microphone, as soon as the community reports are over, there was not an interest in the business meeting, and so we could hear what the folks had to say would be taken care of. We had two opportunities, one for recognitions and one later on, roundtable. I took the responsibility. I've been called, that that was an arbitrary responsibility, and I should not have done it. If that's the feeling of the majority of the board, then I do apologize. I'm trying to get an efficient, respectful meeting conducted.
I would like to address that. First of all, for the record, I'm not in favor of what happened at our last meeting by way of it was wrong for our community members to have to wait until the end of the meeting to voice their concerns.
Correct.
Public meetings are the people's meetings. I want to bring everyone's attention to an online resource that I found called the Citizens Advocacy Center, and they have a fantastic eight-page document about the constitutionality regarding public comments at meetings and protected speech. For example, with regard to unconstitutional restrictions on free speech, which I'd like to mention now, there are a lot of unconstitutional restrictions on speech under the auspice of maintaining civility and an environment conducive to business. The following are examples of restrictions that a government body may try to impose during public comment when the speaker is engaged in political speech, which impact the content of speech. One way to vet whether a restriction is a neutral or content-based one is to ask if the speech used during the public comment violating the restriction. And here are some types of restrictions. Viewpoint restrictions, and I'll skip over that one for now. Maintaining decorum, which is what you have mentioned, Mrs. Tobiasin. Niceness policies. A decorum or niceness policy attempts to regulate the tenor of individual speakers and how they deliver a comment forbidding speech that is offensive or disrespectful, as you said. They are also considered vague. Some other examples of niceness policies, which are objection unconstitutional, are comments that are abusive or harassing. They're still allowed to be said. And/or state personal attacks, they won't be permitted. It's a violation of the Constitution. Speakers will not be permitted to make condescending comments and name-call any board members is also a restriction of free speech, which is unconstitutional. Speakers shall be courteous and cannot personally disrespect any board members is an unconstitutional restriction on speech, and there are many court cases that cite that. So I just wanted to bring up the other one that stood out to me, repetitive comments. When board members of the public, I'm sorry, members of the public have the same First Amendment freedom to speak, First Amendment freedoms are violated when a public body doesn't allow each person the same opportunity as others to speak during a public comment period. When a public body attempts to restrict repetitive comments, it deprives a show of strength in numbers, and speech encompasses more than words used. It includes mannerisms and individual styles of delivery. A limited time period per speaker prevents unduly repetitive comments is a violation of the United States Constitution, which trumps any other policy or guideline or even something under NISBA, as much as we use the NISBA, that's the acronym for those of you who are here. The NISBA guidelines are the New York State Association of School Boards. NISBA is not able to trump the United States Constitution. So for that, I'll refrain any other comments. Thank you.
Is there any other board member that wish to speak?
Yes, there's a fatal flaw in your argument. This isn't a public meeting. This is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public. So thank you for that educational speech, but it doesn't apply here. This is a business meeting. We afford the public an opportunity to address.
I don't agree with you.
You don't have to agree with it. It's a reality.
I don't think you're right.
As I said, I apologized. I was looking forward to having a meeting that would run smoothly. Most of us at this table last time were here until quarter after 12:00. I also will say that I like where we try to respect you as the public, and we do like the public to try to respect us. As you well know, that when the comments at the podium by the public, we are not permitted to respond to you. If you have a specific question, they are generally directed to the superintendent, and the superintendent will respond to you in a very timely manner. I think many folks have seen evidence of that in the last two meetings, when our interim superintendent has gotten back to folks at the podium. Hearing no other discussion on -- Mr. Perino, sorry.
Vince, I'm going to agree with Mr. Crescendo here. This is a business meeting held in public. And actually, the commissioner has ruled that, and there have been cases on this, that the public, we do not have to allow the public to speak. We do that as a courtesy, and we've done this as a courtesy, and we'll continue to do this as a courtesy. So that's my view on that in a few short words.
Madam Chair, I'll be brief. Respect to all my colleagues here. It may be true that it's a business meeting, but once we, as a board, have opened it up and schools, by and large, are considered limited public forums, we cannot be going back and forth. We cannot allow one viewpoint, and then because we don't like certain viewpoints or because they may not be in favor of board actions or my vote or your vote, look a ways to limit it. I think it's important that there be consistency, otherwise we are violating the Constitution and the First Amendment. This school district belongs to the people, the community, and they have the right to be heard. Last meeting I had, for emergency reasons, had to leave early, so I wasn't here till 1:00. And I know that's not easy. I know many of my member colleagues here for different reasons, but it comes with the job. And there may be times when maybe you have to be here at 1:00. Okay? But the people, if they feel they have to be heard, for whatever reason, whether we agree or disagree, we owe it to them to be heard. These are not just any people. They are parents, our taxpayers, the ones that, at the end of the day, are responsible, the pillars that hold up our district. And I would ask that community remarks be restored back to where they have been for all the years I've been here.
Thank you for your suggestion. As I said, I was trying to give the public the opportunity to be heard early. I need a motion to either accept Mrs. Houston's motion. So I'm asking for a vote on Mrs. Houston's motion.
I withdraw my motion, and I would like to propose Mr. Gomez's motion instead, and my name is Mrs. Houston.
Can you repeat what Mr. Gomez's motion is?
Go ahead, Mr. Gomez.
The proposal is, not to take any more time, that community reports be restored back to their place in the regular meeting calendar, as they have been for the last -- they've been during the time I've been here, which I think at this point has come into six years.
I second that motion.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Should we do a roll call?
Good idea.
I'll ask for a roll call if it's not clear.
Mr. Crescendo.
I vote no. We can change it for the next meeting, if necessary.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Mrs. Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
No.
Ms. Tobiasin.
No.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell Williams. It's a tie vote.
It doesn't pass.
No, it does not pass. I need an approval of the agenda as it stands.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. We had the discussion, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All opposed.
Opposed.
Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the regular minutes from the October 7th, 2021 meeting.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Crescendo.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. We now have the approval of the Personnel Memorandum 9A.
It's not there. It's right here. It's here.
If there's no objection, I'd like to do Personnel Memorandum 9A and 9B.
Since we're not allowed to discuss personnel matters, how do I know what exactly is on it since there was a discussion in the back room? Is this including what was in the discussion in the back room or not?
It does not include it.
Okay.
And our executive session began at 5:00, and I believe you did not arrive until 6:15.
I'm for the record that I was late, Mrs. Tobiasin, but that didn't matter. I needed to know.
May I have a motion to approve 9A and 9B?
So move.
Is there any discussion on 9A and 9B?
Does 9B involve the discussion that I was present for in the executive session?
It is in your packet. It was in board documents.
The board docs tends to change on a regular basis, so I'm just making sure I know what I'm voting for. Thank you. I'll take a moment to find that.
Thank you for your discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I would now like to do the recognitions. Mr. Perino, would you like to handle the recognition tonight?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Tobiasin. I'd like to call up to the podium members of the Middletown Elks Lodge in '97, plus Principal of Middletown High School, Lauren Dur, plus our Student of the Month. And Lauren, why don't you introduce our student and say a few words about the Student of the Month?
Good evening, Interim Superintendent Mrs. Creedon, Interim Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Adoma, Vice President Ms. Tobiasin, and members of the board. It gives me great pleasure this evening to introduce Ann Augustine. Ann Augustine has been a valued member of the high school community now for four years. She has been on our volleyball team, as well as a leader within our Middletown Midi Ambassador Program. She represents everything that Middletown High School believes in and strives to promote and produce, and we take great pleasure and pride in recognizing her this evening with the Student of the Month for the Elks Club.
Thank you, Ms. Dur. Now I'd like to call a member of the Elks up and introduce the other members.
Hi, I'm Jen Neuburger, Leading Knight of the Middletown Elks Lodge. With me tonight is our Loyal Knight Scott Hamel and our Lecturing Knight Sue Hamel, and we are so pleased, on behalf of the Middletown Elks, to give Ann the certificate for all of her wonderful academic and athletic accomplishments. It's a pleasure. Congratulations.
Let's get everybody in the board up there.
Let's remain socially distant back to back. Do you want to say anything? Would you like to say anything?
I was told you wouldn't want to say anything. Mrs. Tobiasin. Are you there? Are you there? Okay.
Well, we want to congratulate you. You have 24 credits towards graduation already, and your average is, yes, 99.38.
Do you have a tear fall? Want to congratulate?
I'm not sure the public heard that. She wants to be a -- go ahead.
I would like to be a P.A. or a forensic agent.
Sure. How would you like it? Here? Front? Or in the front?
Probably.
Let's go in the front. Okay, that sounds good.
Also credit.
Lauren? Congratulations. So I know you end up in the middle, so that's a good thing. Can I move you here in the middle sort of? Let's everyone kind of gather around here if we can. Standing members, please feel free. Friends, come up and hold some stuff. Get everybody tight here. Starting from this like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have another meeting.
Yeah, one, please.
I want to thank all the members of the Elks for being here, and we're going to do this each month, and toward the end of the year, we're going to have a little something for our honorees. And I ask, we have 1,100 members of the Elks Lodge, and they all vote, so good.
We have come to that part of our meeting. Yes, that I changed for the opportunity to address from the public, and I've asked Mrs. Creedon to.
Thank you. Good evening. The Board of Education and the school district value public participation in the Board of Trustees' business meeting. We recognize the importance of input on issues affecting the community. The Board of Education and the school district have a role in serving our community and our scholars as exemplars. At the September 23rd and October 7th Board of Trustees' meeting, there were members of the school community who addressed the board. We wanted to take a minute to make sure that we brought to light for the entire community the comments and the themes that they reflected. Brought to light on September 23rd and October 7th were the poor handling of a situation involving a high school student, issues with transportation, concerns over COVID-19, remote learning, the search for a superintendent, concerns about special education, and the culture and working environment. Please know that everybody who addressed the Board of Trustees' is valued, the voice was heard, and follow-up has either been done or is in process. The student issue is a confidential matter, but a meeting is scheduled to take place with that family. Systems were put in place to support transportation improvements, routes were adjusted to meet the needs of the concerns, and there were improved levels of customer service, and our expectation remains excellence. We continue to monitor our COVID-19 community transmission rates and are ready to adjust our return to in-person instruction as needed. The Board of Trustees' is prepared to update the community in a very short while on the process for hiring a superintendent. The Board recently attended a workshop facilitated by the New York State School Boards Association on the process for recruiting and hiring a superintendent. The district is working to have an audit of the Special Education Department completed. Investigations have begun within the district to dig into the statements made about culture and the working environment, and our community is being provided with additional opportunities to share their experiences and concerns in smaller settings. This week, we held our first talk about it Tuesday, and there's a virtual town hall being held on November 1st. I hope that bringing to light some of this information gives the wider viewing audience an opportunity to hear about the concerns and know that the district is taking action to hear what you're saying, listen, and create action-focused steps. Please just note that we are prohibited from discussing personnel items as well as scholar issues. The public session is not the forum for this. These conversations occur in executive session. Thank you.
As I said, we have now come to the point in our meeting where we do allow the community to address the board. You will have four minutes to speak at the podium. When your time is up, you may finish your sentence, but please respect the other people in the room that have come to speak as well. Time will be kept on the screen at the back of the room and on the screen behind us. The board does not dialogue with the speakers. We are here to listen. Please be sure to sign in at the podium before speaking. Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Tony Gisperic. I'm the owner of Sierra Wolf Heating and Cooling on I'm the owner of C.R. Wolf Heating and Cooling on... At 449 East Main Street. We're a neighbor of you at the Carter School. Since the renovations to your drop-off pickup work was done, we've had significant issues with cars speeding through our parking lots, primarily parents, but I can't say all parents. I'm not standing out there watching. But it's primarily happening at the drop-off and pickup times. We've gotten to a point now that we've actually started blocking the two routes around our building because we're afraid that children will be hit or my staff will be hit. And we've even had Nurse Ronnie, I believe, is the nurse at Carter School. My kids don't go here. I got it right? Okay. She's even called us and asked us in the first week of school to block the... Our lots because of her concerns. I've... Lenny was... There's Lenny. He was kind enough to come to our office. We've played a little phone tag, talked earlier. I've... I don't know if it's Dr. or Mrs. Creedon. I've called your office twice now. I haven't gotten a call back from anyone there. But we're at a point now that we don't know what to do other than every day blocking the front of our building. And that... What that does is just pushes cars into parking lots that are for adjacent businesses. We don't have piles of leaves yet. We don't have snow mounds yet. And yet, you still have cars and kids meandering through these parking lots in ways that are not safe. These are not my kids. My kids are out of high school. Thank God. But they're our kids. So, this is not a matter of if someone will get hit. It's a matter of when someone will get hit, whether it be my staff or someone's child. And I spent 17 years on a school board in my hometown. I know your jobs are tough. But I also know that the number-one priority is and has always been for every school board, safety of the kids. This is beyond me being inconvenienced. I don't care. If that's all it was, so what? But if I'm blocking all of these egresses around my building, and we need an emergency vehicle to cut through my property, they're going to get stopped too. We need something to happen. At this point, I've had police pointing to Board of Ed and Board of Ed pointing to police, and I have nothing. Jim Wolfe, the property owner who has been the property owner there... Well, he's the son of C.R. Wolfe. He went and spoke to Kathy Jensen, who I believe is the principal at Carter School. And he had told me that promises were made. We haven't seen anything. We've seen maybe one police officer one day the whole time we've been there of this school year. I'm asking for help. Help to protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure that you will have an immediate answer within a very short period of time to your concern.
You want my business cards? Do you have my phone number?
Mrs. Creedon. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Christine Doyle. I've been an employee in the district for the past 28 years. I'm here this evening to tell you that I was part of the Committee on Preschool Special Education Team that read their impact statements at the last Board of Ed meeting. Roxana Colazo, Lisa Klein, and I worked together from 2005 to 2018. And in that time, we successfully assisted in getting well over 1,000 students special education services. However, during the last two years of that time, we were all subject to harassment, embarrassment, bullying, and treated disrespectfully by our leader, Ms. Marconi. If any of you are interested in more details about the situation, I would be more than willing to discuss my personal situation with you as I have documentation and personal notes that I have. However, my intention is not in turn to be disrespectful to anyone. My purpose for coming here tonight is to speak to you to address some of the comments that were made during the last roundtable discussion at the last meeting. It was said by one of the board members that he just stopped listening when the people at the mic are disrespectful. While I can understand that, in general, I do not believe any of the comments made by my colleagues were meant to be disrespectful to anyone. I believe they were speaking from their hearts and passionate about what they were sharing because they're crying out for help from you to assist us in eliciting some change, including looking at the director's special education position and determining if there needs to be a change. People are coming here to tell you of their negative experiences, not to be disrespectful, but to inform you what's happening in the district under your watch. I can tell you, for me personally, my harassment ended after I was taken out of the position of CPSC Chairperson in June of 2018, and I was made the full-time educational evaluator beginning September of that year. However, from fall of 2017 through fall of 2018, I watched the same behavior of harassment and embarrassment occur over and over, just with different staff members, from secretaries to homeschool liaisons, teachers, and related service staff. I saw competent secretaries be let go just before their probation periods ended. In one particular situation, the person was working with the CPSC team from October of 2017 from February of 2018. She was quite proficient at learning the job quickly. After this person made it known to the director that she supported our CPSC team and questioned why Ms. Marconi did not welcome our expertise, she was let go prior to her probation period ending. Another comment made during the roundtable focused on students. If you review the opportunity to address the board, you'll hear teachers, psychologists, and other staff telling how they're frustrated and not being able to do their jobs without professional courtesy or respect from our leader. This absolutely affects students, and yet, these professionals show up day in, day out to educate and nurture our students without administrative support. I can tell you that from my own experience, crying behind a closed door during the workday because you feel so alone and isolated definitely impacts productivity, ultimately impacting students. While I endured, and I came out on the other side, my colleagues are still going through this very thing today. I hope that you listen to the outcry for change. People don't... Please don't turn to deaf ears. You're hearing six years of frustration from your employees. But once we discovered that so many of us had similar experiences, we knew that we had to come together to advocate for ourselves, but for the students as well. The students are the reason why we are still here while others have left. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Starlene Seligman, and my son Tanner Seligman attends the high school. My son Tanner is a senior this year, and he'll be graduating with an Advanced Regents diploma. He's also on the spectrum for autism. Tanner has been in therapy since the age of 18 months old, starting with early intervention. I started at this point because that is where I started having to deal with the school district and fight for my son to make sure he received the services he needed and that he was in the proper classroom settings. It became like a full-time job for me. I studied special ed regulations and laws, and I advocated for my son. I quickly realized that if I was not informed, the administration was not going to willingly share information that could be beneficial to my son. Tanner and I have had some wonderful experiences with staff. Jennifer O'Boyle took an interest in my son after meeting him when he was in kindergarten and asked to have him in her first-grade regular ed class. And she spent the following summer learning about my son's disability and made sure that she was an absolutely amazing teacher for him. For second, third, and fourth grade, I decided to put Tanner in a class that was all kids on the spectrum for autism. This is where I met the nothing less than amazing Cheryl Decker. She was an asset to Spectrum Kids. She understood these kids, and she and the amazing teachers aides in that room took such time, patience, and care with these kids. And then, the Middletown District decided to bring both these kids back into the district, which the staff and the administration were not prepared to deal with. My son ended up with a child in his class that was very volatile and aggressive. He threw a chair at Mrs. Decker. She repeatedly asked for this child to be placed in a more suitable setting and was ignored by the administration. And the parents ended up having to rally against the district to have this child placed in a different setting. I hope that the money that the district saved by taking both these kids out and putting them back in the district was worth it. When my son made it to Maple Hill with Dominic Redonia as the principal, things got worse. My son was in an inclusion class that was not properly staffed, and the students were suffering. When I questioned the staffing, I was initially lied to and told that the staffing was fine, and they were hiring another person. So, as a parent of a special ed child, I want all of you to know that I take his education very seriously. And every year since the day he started school, I would make an appointment before the school year started to meet all the staff. And when school started, I would go and sit in my son's classroom and follow him through an entire day of school every single year until he was mature enough when he started high school, and I didn't need to do that anymore. So, I was well aware that that room was not properly staffed. I tried to be patient. More than two months into the school year, I finally filed a report with the New York State Department of Ed. There was an investigation. The district was found negligent and forced to comply. While all of this was going on, teachers and staff were told not to speak to me. The administration assumed that their staff was giving me too much information, not that I was an educated parent. Administration also contacted me and asked me if I would let the report go if they remedied the problem because they said it was a lot of paperwork. I ended up pulling my son out of Maple Hill and putting him in Presidential. These are only two of the situations I had to deal with because I know I don't have a lot of time. But I could probably talk about the past 14 years of my son's education for hours. I want to thank Patrick Woods for being our rock through the difficult high school COVID years. He gets 100% of my respect for diplomatically handling any issues that have come up, like a true professional. To close, I would like to ask that teachers and staff are not threatened or intimidated for doing the right thing. They know their students. I'm not advocating for my son at this point. I'm advocating for all the teachers and staff who aren't heard and for parents who can't advocate for their child due to a language barrier or a lack of information given by the district. Take care and support your students and staff.
Thank you.
Good evening, Middletown School Board Directors. First, I want to introduce myself. My name is Andrew Moore. I was born and raised in Brooklyn, New York, East New York section of Brooklyn. Anyone that knows Brooklyn pretty well knows that's one of the prettiest rough areas back in early... Late, early 90s. So, being able to make it out of there is pretty unique and pretty special. I graduated in 2010 from Dowling College with my MBA, and also in 2007 with my BBA in Business Management and Computer Information Systems. Currently, I work for the New York City Department of Education. I'm a school business operations manager for the past 10 years, also a licensed real estate agent with Avenue Sotheby's International Realty. For the past 10 years, I'm actively involved in developing relationships with 500 Fortune companies such as IBM, Microsoft, Etsy, N4, just to name a few. I've been able to sit on panels with Lorraine Powell Jobs to discuss new ways to redesign high school. I've mentored over 200-plus scholars... 200-plus scholars to obtain post-secondary degrees, opportunities in STEM-related careers. I've written grants and have been awarded close to... Over $2.5 million to PTech High School in Brooklyn during my tenure, one of which was a $750,000 grant that was for STEM Lab, which included 3D printers and over 400-plus ThinkPad laptops and supplies, including training and professional development. I've helped over 150 homeowners become... Achieved their American dream in homeownership throughout the tri-state in this very same city at which I have currently moved to. I recently moved to Middletown after living in Brooklyn and Queens for a number of years with my family, my wife, and my three kids. I've decided to come to Middletown with one goal in mind. It was to nurture the community that I live in, provide many resources and creative initiatives to see that our kids and the neighboring children have opportunities that would be... That we were unfortunate to have growing up. After visiting Middletown a number of months, I decided to purchase and build my home up in Middletown, the Washington Heights area. My kids currently go to Presidential Heights, and that's another situation I will leave towards the end to discuss what's going on there at the school. So, it's been perfect timing, I'm to say. I had an opportunity to interview for a position of Director of Personnel in late December, just before I moved into Middletown. From my understanding, the interview went pretty well. But unfortunately, you know, based off of the many board meetings I have reviewed prior to coming to this... To the city, I found that the city and the district was looking for change in equity and inclusion. And it was looking for someone to take on that lead to be able to attract new talent and also give an opportunity to bring in new talent, which I'm pretty capable of doing. I had a chance to interview for the position. While the feedback was great, and I really appreciate you guys. Don't cut me off during this time period. I really appreciate that. I was quite alarmed by the feedback that I received for the position at first. It was told that it was filled, when that was not true. I actually received a letter in the mail that actually wasn't addressed to me, which I found very disrespectful and unfortunate for someone that's actually a taxpaying citizen in this city. I was once questioned... Asked was questioned by a board member, receiving that the information was... The interview went pretty well. I fast-forward to now. I recently was interviewed for Assistant Director of Personnel position. Interview went pretty well. But I'm starting to see a trend in some of the hiring practice that you guys have here in the district. And I would love to have opportunities to address some of the inconsistencies and the lack of transparency that's going on in this district. It went pretty well. As far as that, the references, for instance, was never contacted. I found that to be kind of strange of being one of the top three allegedly... Saying that I was a top-three allegedly candidates for the position. And unfortunately, the vetting process wasn't followed through correctly. My ultimate question to everyone tonight is, how can we improve the hiring experiences for candidates? And also, how can we improve an opportunity to attract new talent and reduce the turnover that's going on in the district? As you can see from today's agenda, there's a lot of turnover and a lot of people leaving the district, and I wonder why. And my number-one question to myself is, did I make a good decision bringing my family here and spending north of $650,000 for a home with most of my taxes going to support this district and totally not seeing the actual benefit and support for long term for my kids' sake? And last to lap up is... My students have... My students. My children have come home many times, and they go to Presidential Park. And they actually have about... This is what they're telling me, and I believe them. Two to three minutes to sit down and eat lunch, which I find very alarming. My son eats lunch first because of the kindergarteners, and then my daughters are in third and fourth grade. And they literally tell me they have two to three minutes to eat lunch. On top of that, my daughters are... My kids do not eat red meat and pork and the stuff of that nature that you guys may serve here. And for them to be forced to tell my child, "Just take it and go", I find that highly, highly disrespectful as a parent. And unfortunately, we can't come to the building to address things, and we have to just call. And half the time, it goes on deaf ears. So, tonight, I'm here to just address that. Can we please figure out a way to fix the lunch situation for the children at the school and provide better lunches? I came from the city, and we did not have what they're eating every day. It's actually... I'm actually surprised by what they're being offered at the school. And if there's any way for I can be able to assist and help with that, I would love to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is June Elaine Owens. I'm the school psychologist at William A. Carter. I'm reading an anonymous letter on behalf of one of my colleagues. I am writing this letter as an almost-20-year special education teacher in the district. Over my years, I have worked under various principals and special education administrators. Although I would love to address the toxicity that myself and my colleagues have endured since current special education administration, I am not going to. What I'm going to address is the CSE process since the current administration and how it is hindering the education of the students in the district. Although I have had many students over the past few years affected by the CSE process, I am going to give an example of what our students are enduring due to our process. Let's use an example of a student that I will call Jason. Jason is a transfer student placed in a special... I'm sorry. Jason is a transfer student placed in a self-contained classroom from another state. Jason is classified as a student with autism, has little to no language other than echolalic language, and has self-directed and sensory-seeking behaviors. After a few days of Jason being in his new placement, he begins to exhibit behaviors such as eloping, running around the room, and throwing objects. The teacher's immediate directive given by administration is to collect data and come up with interventions for Jason. During this, the teacher is not allowed to call a program review for Jason even though Jason is exhibiting unsafe behaviors toward himself by eloping and toward the other children by throwing objects. During this time, the teacher must contain Jason and, despite all that is going on, keep him and the others safe. For example, when Jason gets extremely violent, the other students must be removed and crisis must be called, which in turn means no instruction for those students for that period of time. After weeks of data collection, Jason's mother will be sent a consent form for an FBA, which is a functional health care program. which is a functional behavioral assessment. Jason's mother believes that an FBA will not help because Jason's behaviors are impulsive, but she agrees to sign and go ahead with the process to determine if a behavior intervention plan is warranted. At this point, a month and a half may have passed since Jason has entered the room. During this month and a half, Jason has had no instruction, and the other students have had little to no instruction. The weeks have been spent trying to contain Jason's behaviors and trying to keep him and the other students safe. As more time goes by and the FBA is written, we have to determine whether or not a behavior plan is warranted, which could take more weeks. And during this time, the teacher is told by the administration to fill out a form, either a change in placement or a request for a one-to-one aid. Therefore, the decision has been made about Jason for the predetermination of the CSE. By the time we come to CSE meeting for Jason, again, with his decision already being made, three months or so have passed. Jason is recommended then for an out-of-district program. But because we are now so late in the school year, there are no out-of-district spots for Jason. Because of his violent behaviors, he will be placed on home instruction pending his placement, which could take another few months. At this point, Jason's classmates in the district have lost three months of education due to the teacher needing to contain and manage Jason, and Jason will lose about a total of six months. For a student with autism, the loss of education due to an inappropriate placement means a possible regression of already acquired skills, a loss of tools to help with sensory needs, and an overall loss of regular instruction to fit his needs. Not to mention during the months that when the teacher was trying to contain Jason, his impulsive behavior that led to his eloping was a safety concern. When the teacher addressed this safety concern with administration, the teacher was just told to continue to collect data. So my question is, if Jason ran away and made it out of the building, who would be responsible for this child? The directive of collecting data is not going to keep a child safe. In conclusion, and using my professional judgment, I believe we need to start going by what the law states with CSE meetings. A CSE meeting should be able to be called by anyone on the team working with that child. A CSE meeting should not be predetermined prior to the meeting. A CSE should also not have to be approved by administrator after weeks of data being given. I truly believe that overall, we need to start looking at our special education students as human beings with special needs and not data entry points. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and the Middletown School community. My name is Ann Ketchum, and I have been a school psychologist in this district for 16 years. I recently Googled signs of a toxic work environment, and these are the most common signs that came up. One, employees are afraid to give honest feedback, voice their opinions to higher-ups, and don't report issues to HR due to fear of retaliation. Two, micromanaging. Employees have little or no autonomy in performing their jobs. Three, poor communication. Four, employees being overworked and not valued. Five, values and actions do not match. The company has a worthy mission or vision statement which is used to mask the greed or selfishness that motivate managers and leaders. Six, leaders that make derogatory, belittling statements to employees. Seven, negative feedback is the only type of feedback given. Eight, aggressive or bullying behavior that are accepted, excused, and tolerated by leadership. And finally, nine, high employee turnover. All of these signs are alive and well in the Middletown School District. But the one that is the most glaring and easiest to substantiate is the employee turnover. Since the current director of special education started in her position almost four years ago, over 114 individuals have resigned, retired, or transferred out of the special education department. 114 names on this page. I'm sure the actual number is higher, but my eyes were burning and my hand cramped up at 114. The toxic work environment in this district is very real, and I certainly hope that 114 people leaving one department in four years is a message that will be received by this board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is David Cusick. I've been in the district for 25 years as a school psychologist. The Matthew Effect is a term that originates in the Gospel of Matthew, 25, verse 14 to 30. It refers to the concept that the poor get poorer and the rich get richer. This term is used in education when identifying students with disabilities as soon as possible so that we can support them and/or remediate those weaknesses so they do not fall behind their peers. I understood this, and 10 years ago, I asked to be in the elementary school with the goal of reducing your special education population through targeted identification of weaknesses at an early age before those weaknesses had a chance to impact their learning. Management didn't see it that way and directed me to the high school. When I said I believed their decision was detrimental to the students of this district, I was threatened and asked if I still wanted to work in Middletown. They didn't care about the students or my expertise. Over the next several years, I watched beautiful buildings rise up and very impressive additions were created in the high school. And at the same time, I witnessed an astounding 40% to 50% increase in the special education population at the high school with no increase in the support staff that directly serviced them. The rich got richer and the poor got poorer. Well, we're being asked to provide grace to those same administrators who would like to keep working here. Grace, as defined by Christians, is a gift from God that is undeserved and unexpected and takes the form of divine favor and clemency. By asking for grace, it sounds as if there is an open admission of guilt. Perhaps if we start with an explanation of why the pleas of the staff were ignored, why parents that begged for help were turned aside, maybe then your abused staff and cast-aside parents will offer grace. By the way, those on the board that have also ignored the ever-increasing number of special education students and done nothing to help, maybe you should ask for grace as well.
Thank you.
All right. So my name's Andre DeRosa. I'm not going to touch the mic. My name is Andre DeRosa. I'm a teacher at the Middletown High School. I've been teaching here for, this is my 13th year. And there's one thing that I really have to, there's an elephant in the room, okay? And this elephant in the room is the fact that we're addressing the Board of Education with our concerns. And our concerns, for some reason, they're being referred, and I understand that you're saying that this is the process, but they're being referred to Amy Creden, okay? And we've already established that Amy Creden is one of the persons that has been a perpetrator of this bully culture, okay? So it's not comfortable. We don't, most of us do not want to speak with Amy Creden. We're coming here because we're trying to avoid speaking to the administration because that has failed. We're not comfortable with that. There is no trust, okay? So for you guys to hear us say and speak about this bully culture and the culprits of this bully culture, and you guys know that we've identified who these people are, and then refer us to one of those people, to one of those persons, it blows my mind. It means that we are not being listened to. All right, you guys are not really listening to us. You are sending the abused to the abuser. It's crazy. These are not, this is not something where you can say, I agree or I don't agree. These are facts. We're coming here, and we're speaking the truth. The things that we're saying and everybody else is saying, all my colleagues are saying, they're documented. You guys can actually do your research and find all this stuff out yourselves if you don't believe anybody or believe us. Imagine, we're tenured teachers. Imagine how untenured teachers feel, how scared they are, the turnover of untenured teachers or just the fact that they don't get the opportunity to even continue working here, you know? So I'm running out of time. So this is my question. What is the reason for the special treatment given to Cara Marconi, given to Amy Creden, given to Tracy Sorrentino? Because if any teacher had grievances or investigations against them or treated students like these mentioned people have treated their employees, as teachers, we would be fired. We would be rid of. So, and we also have to remember, who was the assistant superintendent who was overseeing Cara Marconi? Amy Creden. That means that you've known what's been going on, okay? So this is what I've seen. The technique used at this district, this is the last thing, to get away with things, or at least that's what it appears, and to discourage the community and teachers and employees is to exhaust them with a lack of action until all hope is lost on the victim's part, until they give up and become compliant. Unfortunately, I refuse to become discouraged, and I will not model compliance to my students. They deserve better than that. Our students deserve to be modeled integrity, strength, righteousness, true to power, endurance, and the willingness to change what they see wrong in their own life experience. If that's what we want for them, that's what you should want for us. Please do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deborah Clark, and I know a lot about special ed and IEPs and advocates. And I hope to God every one of you on the board knows exactly what that means. I had two children with an IEP. I became an advocate very quick because the school system I was in did not do anything for the children. The IEP is a contract, and a lot of parents don't know that, that are, just don't know. They're not involved. They're working today. Every one of these teachers that are here today, I accolade them. When I hear, and I have to sit here as a taxpayer, my kids are grown, and hear that they've been trying to tell everybody there's a problem, shame on every single person that you, the board, is not helping them with. To me, that's the biggest disgrace. In addition to that, I plan myself, because I've been through this with my children, I will talk to them, and I will find the right people that I had to find in the state level to do something because you get paid money to have teachers in this school to do IEPs and stick to them. I know too many parents and teachers that are so dedicated, and nobody is doing anything to bridge their concerns. So I'm going to help them. I don't know anybody here, but I personally am going to do this on my own time because I believe in it. And some of you know me. And if you know me, you know that I'm going to follow through. I think it's a disgrace that this lasted this long. Children are suffering because they're not getting an education. That is a contract. That IEP is a contract. And if your people in your departments are not helping them fulfill it, shame on every single person in this district. It's your obligation to understand what an IEP is. And I swear to God, as I'm standing here, I'm helping every one of these teachers get what they need for the children. We are here for children, not for politics. Do your job. Go to your department heads, and if they're not doing their job, get them out.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Curtis Rett. I'm a retired administrator from New York City, but I've been living up in Middletown since 2002. You know, I felt the need to move, to chime into what I've been hearing. I listened to the board meeting last week, and it really touched me to see how teachers came and rallied and talked about what was important to them and how they felt they were not being supported. It took a lot of courage. And me, as an administrator, I believe very strongly in a coaching, supervision-type of model where we try to empower teachers and we try to give them coherent and professional development that they feel they need and that they feel comfortable with. I listened to them talk about a young lady by the name of YY Williams and what she had meant to them and how she was, they was inspired by how they was able to get feedback and not the same old jargon about what people want to do and then not getting it done. My other concern is one of the other practices about hiring minorities in these current times where the demographics have changed so much. In 2002, I got my administrative license, and I was so excited about working here in this environment because my children were young. I came in, interviewed. They told me I did a fantastic job. We'll get back to you. Your finalist. And I waited and waited. Finally, somebody got back to me and said, we're going in another direction. We want to thank you very much for, you know, applying. I mean, I have heard this so much over the years. And my role in life right now as a retired administrator is to empower and to support and to mentor and to be of service to those who are not happy and feel uncomfortable with their situation. Over the years, I've heard so many people, and I had to help several people that actually are homegrown. And they graduated from this school, and they wanted to be an administrator or a teacher or, yeah, let's start with a teacher before an administrator. And they said, I didn't get hired. I had to take them down to the city and get them jobs in the city. So then they had to be a part of the same commute and nightmare, you know, separating from your family and just trying to make ends meet and not knowing why, you know, they're just not getting hired in these positions. I mean, the bottom line is, we know what the research shows. It shows that the more you have people of your representation in front of you, it's very beneficial to the child and it will really improve their direction and purpose in life. Moving forward, I met a couple here, Anthony Williams and Ms. Yaya Williams. And I thought about myself. And I thought about how when I came up here, and my wife and I, and we was excited about, you know, starting something anew, you know, really being involved in the community. I watch what these people are doing. They're excited about learning. The teachers are excited about learning. It's time to stop these old practices. Hire the best candidate. It's that simple. It doesn't make any sense, and people know it, and it's just glossed over all the time, that the same situation occurs where you find somebody that's very creditable. And mind you, I don't want to get into color and race, but it's just not fair when the best candidate should be hired for these positions. I'm a substitute teacher right now in the school system, and again, I'm always available to talk. Teachers approach me. I try to, you know, support them in the best way that I can, you know? I'm unbiased, but at the same time, I believe in fairness and equity. Thank you very much.
I would like to start off by introducing myself. My name is Cobra. I used to attend the Middletown High School here, but I'm not here to talk about me today. I'm here to talk about my siblings. I have two siblings that attend Mont Hagen. One of them right now is going through sexual harassment. She is being sent through the school email itself, talking about how I would... A student said to her, "Give me sloppy, and I want you to take my virginity." And it's been going on for about two weeks now. And I would really like to see something done about this by the tech department, anybody. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Danielle. I have three children in this school, two in Mont Hagen and one in Carter. And I listen to everybody talk about safety, well-being, the students, the this, the that, no bullying, no nothing, and my children get it all the time. It started when my daughters were in third grade. She was actually bullied constantly, and then it continued to try to get her into special education. We couldn't even do that because Cara Marconi said she didn't qualify, things like that. She struggled throughout all of elementary. Put yourself together. Again, I apologize.
It's all right. Continue.
And it feels like every time I try to do something, or I try to advise her something, or the school tries to help with something, you guys in turn just bully us. But yet, you're telling us no bullying, no this, no that, but you're condoning it all realistically, if you think about it. And I feel like it's a circle, and I feel like you guys are failing, like literally failing us, failing the students, to be able to succeed properly, correctly. The messages she's getting that 12-year-old should not be receiving, let alone doing. I just cannot wrap my head around this as a parent. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's ethical. I don't think what you guys are doing in general... I understand you guys are working on things. I get it. I understand. You have a large district. I just want to see a difference. I want to see a change. I want to see some sort of something done, whatever that something is. Show us. I want the children, I want other children. My son is in kindergarten, in first grade. What's gonna happen with his grade when they get up to where middle school is? Is this gonna be a worse situation for him to encounter? And I want to see something positive happen for the students, if not for anybody else, for the students. This is what they need.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Bianca Baptiste. I am a parent of the district. I just want to take this time right now to thank Ms. Houston for always advocating for us. You know, me and her, as far as politics, are on the opposite end of the spectrum. However, I think that she is valuable, like so valuable to this board because she speaks up in a way that a lot of you don't. And the rest of, you know, I find that a lot of these board members are very offensive in the way that they speak to people who put them in these seats. You know, every meeting that I have come to since I have joined this district, we have been repeatedly reminded that this is, you know, we're not entitled to this opportunity to speak. However, I just want to be clear to you that a lot of us parents do serve on other boards. We are educated, you know? We're not people who don't understand this process or Robert's Rule of Orders or anything else. But we know that Middletown School District did not create the public forum in school board meetings. Even though there is no law that says that you have to allow us to speak, this is common practice in school districts across the country. It is not something that you created, and you know as well as I that if this was ever taken away, the uproar that would be, because it is not common for a school board to not have a public forum. So I would appreciate it if we stopped reminding our taxpayers that you give us this opportunity. I just want to take a minute to read from the Association of School Attorneys, and what they state is, "There is no statutory requirement that school boards allow members of the public to speak at school board meetings, except in New York City. However, the Commissioner of Education has encouraged school boards to allow citizens to speak whenever possible on matters under consideration. The Commissioner has ruled that since there is no statutory obligation to have any public comment at a board of education meeting, boards are not compelled to give non-residents the opportunity to speak at public board meetings, even when the board has a policy permitting residents to speak. However, the Committee on Open Government has reached the opposite conclusion, concluding that it would be unlikely that a public body could validly prohibit a non-resident from speaking at a public forum based on residency. In considering whether or not to allow non-residents to speak at school board meetings, consult with the board's attorney and be consistent with board policy. It is appropriate for a school board to limit the amount of time allotted to a person who wishes to speak at a board meeting, so long as the limitation is reasonable." I would also like to say that I did attend this Talk It Out Tuesday with Ms. Creden this week. I think it is an excellent idea. I do appreciate you addressing some of our concerns at the beginning of the meeting. I do have my concerns with how you got to your seat, which has nothing to do with you because the board is the one who made that decision. But we need to hear those concerns because as an HR professional, a lot of the things that I hear from our teachers is absolutely not acceptable. So we really need, especially with the people who spoke tonight about, you know, their interviews, we need to rethink these hiring practices. It is not okay. There are certain things that just should not be allowed. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Hearing none. I hope that the format of moving the opportunity to address the board was more beneficial to everyone here this evening. We'll move on then with our meeting. Item number nine is the district reports and presentations, and at this time, I'd like our interim superintendent, Mrs. Creden, for a district report and her presentations.
Mrs. Tobiason, were there any letters before Mrs. Creden?
Were no letters.
Okay, thanks.
And I apologize for not indicating that there weren't any letters.
Great. Thank you, community and Board of Education. This evening, we are going to start off the district presentations with a video that was created by the high school teachers and scholars, and so we're gonna take a minute The high school educators and scholars thought that it would be an opportunity to showcase a little bit what was happening in the first few weeks of school, since we aren't getting quite the same experience being back in classrooms in terms of visits by families and outsiders. So they wanted to kind of bring you into the classroom a little bit. So thank you for giving me that time. I wanted to turn it over to Mr. Tuttle to do a quick recap for the community this evening on the Twin Towers Facilities Capital Project.
Hello, good evening. In the past, the last meeting, we presented a capital facilities planning review of Twin Towers Middle School and Truman Moon Roof Repair. We had the architects in. This is a project we've been working on since July with the Board of Education and going through some reiterations of planning for a referendum in December. So what we wanted to do tonight was just recap what we've been looking at, remodeling Twin Towers. Couple of things that we looked at, it was either going out and getting 25 acres of usable land in the area. Obviously, in the city of Middletown would have been preferred. That was not an option for us, and if it was, we would be looking at $140 million purchase of land in a new school. So we came up with the idea of possibly renovating Twin Towers, putting some new classrooms in, modernizing all the HVAC and all the facilities, infrastructure, et cetera. So in this current picture here, if you see on the left where we just outlined, we'll have a new bus loop there to help offset some of the traffic and busing. On the student drop-off side, which has been a massive complaint for us, in the morning or afternoon, if you go over that way, you'll see the roads are backed up pretty significantly. So on the right-hand side, we have a little drop-off area, which will help alleviate some of the parking and student drop-off and pickup in the morning and afternoon. In the back, one of the things that was a great idea was to create some more space for a recess and some more opportunity for physical education classes to participate outside with some different types of play areas. Not necessarily, this is what's gonna be done, this is just concepts right now. After the referendum, we'll sit down with the Twin Towers group in each specific area and go over what they actually really need and really get the design that would be very beneficial to them. On the side of the library, if you're familiar with Twin Towers, we're looking at putting a three-story addition on there. One on the bottom floor would have central prep, a new central prep for the distribution of food for the district, a new cafeteria, and also in the current library, creating a tech suite, an art suite, putting a new media center on one of the floors, and creating some new additional classrooms in that building. One of the other things that we really, when we really started the concept probably about two years ago, when we had 98-degree heat in September, we realized that we needed air conditioning in this building and upgraded the HVAC system. So we've been talking about that piece for a while, and then when the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan money came in, we thought that would have been a good idea to really increase and go to a bigger building and modernize the building. And over at Truman Moon, the older part of the building, right here in this area, we need some roof repair, and that was identified after we've done an air conditioning upgrade over the past year and a half over there, and some of the roofing was really deteriorated. It's over 20 years old, and so it's time for a replacement on that building. So if we just recap the funding sources, we talked about last time, the American Rescue Plan. Right now, that would be about $13.5 million, so that's grant-funded, no cost to the taxpayer there. The CARES Act funding, a little bit over $5 million, another grant-funded opportunity. Using our capital reserves, which we've been planning for, some type of work over at Twin Towers, a little over $17 million. Food, using food service fund balance to help with the offset of the new central prep area, and then using unappropriate fund balance of $7.8 million. Additionally, we'd be looking to get state aid, which is almost $37 million, and that's just an anticipated state aid, depending on the economy, when we actually go to funding and bonding of the project. So this is, all this is gonna be done with an additional tax increase to the taxpayer and the tax levy. The project costs for both buildings will be a little over $83 million. $46.2 million will be district and grant-funded, and then we need to borrow over 15 years, almost $37 million. And then when we get our state aid back, the $2.4 million a year pays for the borrowing. So essentially, you have a... Twin Towers will be almost $81 million renovation with no additional tax to the taxpayer. And then what I just want to reiterate is the referendum vote would be on December 14th if all approved, and then we can get going and designing it. Does anybody have any questions?
Does any board member have any questions for Mr. Tuttle?
First, thank you, Mr. Tuttle, for the fine presentation. I just want a couple of questions. I, like many parents, I like the changes being made with the drop-offs for the bus stop. I know that's been an issue of concern, and I also want to commend the Middletown and Tana Wallco PD because sometimes in the morning, especially in the drop-off, there are drivers who are rushing, I guess, to get to the highway, but maybe somewhat careless. In fact, there was one day, my wife was driving to drop off my kids at the high school, and the car swerved in such a way that could have hit kids walking and hit her car. And then that same day, I think I was going to the district office, on the way home, I almost had the same experience. So I think that will help relieve concerns, and it will ask the district to hear the concerns of the gentleman who has his business next to Carter, definitely. We had looked at different models as to how to address Twin Towers. One was build and tie junior high into middle school. Another one was just continue the approach of making reparations, and now we're doing an upgrade, which I think was the middle plan and the best one. It saves the historical and provides more opportunities. Could you tell us overall how much money that will save us had we gone for any one of the other two?
Well, the original, what I talked about before, if we were to purchase land, which you need 25 acres of usable land, so it can't be just 25 acres. So it can't be just 25 acres where you can't use it for fields and building and parking and things like that. And if we were to build a new school, it would have been anticipated up to $140 million. And then these other iterations that we started at, we had, when we began in July, we had three different iterations, which we actually presented to Twin Tower staff. One was $90 million, $80 million, and $70 million. So we actually, we went through those three designs, and we actually came up with a design D, which took some of each design, and we ended up at the $81 million.
My other question is, you swear on it? Okay. Oh, yes. Once we have the new improved Twin Towers up and running, will that help relieve congestion or affect the population at Monhegan?
No, not immediately, because there's already zoned. The schools are already zoned by, you know, area and streets and...
You don't see any kind of changes in any zoning changes?
I don't believe so, unless there's a massive development of housing and that we see a massive influx of students on one side of town versus the other. But at the moment, no.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And again, I'm very proud that this project is moving, moving forward, and that our kids will be able to have a, in middle school for the 21st century and at the same time preserve the heritage. The building is so rich in heritage, so I think combined, and we're all very pleased with that.
It should be a nice project.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Does any other board member have a question?
So, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Tuttle. I want to say that I am in favor of this project. Equality matters, parity matters when it comes to what one neighborhood has versus another neighborhood with the schools. Monhegan is state-of-the-art, we want Twin Towers to be the same. With that being said, this is a costly project. It was the middle choice, as you mentioned. The state and federal governments, as I mentioned at the last meeting, give us and they also take us away. I'm still going to vote yes on this, but there is something I want to bring up because I want to ask about it, but I have to give a little background first. While I appreciate the efforts and hard work and brilliant concepts of our K G and D Development Architectural Firm, they have a lot of great concepts, great uses of space that I would have never thought of. There is one part of the project, and I'm no way meaning to be negative, it's excellent, and I love what they did with the drive-through for the parent pickup and drop-off. But there is one part that I am still unsettled with. I just want to bring it to the public attention and ask you about whether or not there's been follow-up on this. It's regard, with regard to the health offices, the community health office area, and I don't want to put the wrong name on it, but this can walk a fine line of parents' rights down the road. It is just the building, I understand that. But when it comes to community health offices being in a school building, and I couldn't agree more with my colleagues who mention frequently that it takes a village or a community to support a child or children. But at the end of the day, children still belong to their parents. Now, the health wing is a trend among, amongst school architects. It's a trend, but it needs careful consideration. And in our Building and Grounds Committee meeting yesterday that I sat in on, we were speaking with one of our other members, who is a representative of the health department, health part of our schools, not the health department. But she was talking, she was not complaining. She was just, we asked her some direct questions about her space within, and the health space in the building. And she was actually almost, I would say, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but almost hesitant to sound like she was complaining. But it basically came down to they barely have enough room. And so I want to make sure that the design concept accommodates our own employees and students' health spaces, the basic needs at hand for our nurses and our nurses aides, before we allow anything superseding that to like have push-in community providers, such as doctors and dentists, which is what was mentioned in our architect's plan. Because this is a new trend in government, and some people would refer to that down the line, if it progresses, not right now, as medical tyranny. And many on this Board of Ed might even say I sound like a conspiracy theorist talking, but our school is a race-to-the-top school. And it may surprise many of you to know that years ago, I read cover to cover the paperwork on that, which was ginormous. In that, I found that there were actually, there was a plan to put MRI machines in schools. I found that, and it still to this day disturbs me as to why that would have been necessary. But I would like to know for what purpose that we would have community providers before a bigger space for our own nurses and health professionals? Because I want to know and I want to be able to reassure the parents of our district that down the line, which seems to be the trend, the mandation of unwanted medical practices on our bodies, especially our children's, is a slippery slope when we invite outside providers in to practice medicine on our scholars. And right now, we don't have a problem. We have full parent permission and all of that. But that's how things start out. They start out incrementally. They start out with a little and they push on. So at first, it might be with parental permission. And then one day, the child comes home from school and says, "They gave me a shot at school." Or "They gave me a dental filling at school." So while I'm very much in favor of this project as a whole, and of course, I'm going to vote yes on it, I wanted to bring up that I am not in favor of the plans for what I would refer to as a medical wing. I think our architects need to meet with our heads of our medical area, of our school district, to work on that vision and make it more accommodating for our own employees who do their day-to-day business with the students, rather than a trendy concept that almost seems, and I don't want to say this, but it sounds a little bit Marxist down the line. So I just wanted to say that for the record and ask you, has, since we had the Building and Grounds meeting earlier this week, it wasn't yesterday, I take that back, it was Wednesday, but, no, was it Tuesday? No, it was yesterday, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought as to when. But it's been a busy couple of days for me. Has the health professional area been able to meet with K G and D to express their needs about what it is they think would best serve them and our students?
Thank you, Mrs. Houston.
Oh, okay, for Mrs. Creedon, thank you.
Yeah, so, yes, we did have representation by the district nursing medical staff on the committee. And there is absolutely, we couldn't agree more with you, that there are major revisions that need to be done to the current space and that is included in the planning. So when you look at the design piece of it, there's a big expansion to that area. And then just to further speak about the community health support, because that's really more the avenue that we're looking to go into, because we share those same concerns that you're speaking about. We've had a really successful and active partnership with Cornerstone Health. And they provide off-site but on our campus. And so the reason why we do that is to make sure that we continue to support the idea of a community schools approach. Because of the location of our facilities and in walking distance to many of our homes and communities, it makes them having their medical van, which they bring to our site, we just provide the parking space for them. And like you already acknowledged, and rightfully so, parent permission is absolutely required. We do not get into, you know, the mix of that. So what we're looking for when we talk about creating the community school approach and having a location inside of the school where it can be available for some community health support. We don't necessarily mean in all cases, medical care, but more about perhaps opportunities for healthcare professionals to come in and do workshops, where they provide healthy eating and different dietary choices, or mental health workshops, or social, emotional, and well-being type of health services. And then a successful program that we have with Cornerstone, as you mentioned, is the preventative dental care, which is just truly a deeper understanding of the importance of brushing your teeth and receiving appropriate dental care, but they do not do any services. There are no services.
Thank you, Mrs. Creedon.
So if I could just elaborate a little bit more on the other question. So we started the process, we met two times with staff over in Twin Towers just for concepts. What do you think of these concepts, right? And that's how we came to this final revision. Once, after the referendum is voted on and approved, then the architects will come in and will sit down with the district and each specific department and say, "What do you need and what does this look like for you?" Right, so to that point, what Ms. Creedon was saying, the nurses suite is bigger on the diagram already. But then you sit down with the nurse and say, "Well, how many beds do you think you need?" And so they try to get to all those specifics after the referendum. So they don't get too much detail until the referendum's passed. And then in addition to the community part of it, it would not be accessible daily through the building. It would be an outside entrance, so mostly for weekends or nights or things like that for the community.
How much space are you thinking for this outside access? I'm just wondering if that space would be better served just to give it to our own health depart, health, in-house health?
Yeah, so I don't know the exact square footage, but it's where the old central prep is downstairs. That's where it has an outside entrance and you can come in. It's pretty good space. One of the things to your point is when they're talking about this trend of community schools, is if we actually had to make an appointment with the state ed department to go up and see if we can actually get more state aid, because we do have this facility. And that's really what they're focusing on, is how are you helping the community with space and whatever it is, medical, mental, anything that you need in those areas.
So, yeah, and one more point to that, you make a good point. When it comes to state aid or federal aid, there are always strings attached, and we have to be very careful that we read all that fine print to know what we're getting into when we accept that money. Thank you so much.
Mr. Perino? I'll go around the table, if that's all right? Mr. Perino?
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle, for the presentation. As Mr. Bartlett said, if you remember in our Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, that this is still a fluid process, so things can be changed. We looked at, if I'm correct, Mr. Tuttle, we looked at building a new school. And there were a couple of problems here. Number one, where are you going to get the land in the city? We wanted to keep it in the city. Number two, the cost of a new school, as I remember, was estimated without the land at about $122, $124 million.
Yeah.
And believe me, you're not going to get that type of construction, that art deco. Look, that building is a, one of the anchors of the city, I believe. It's just a beautiful structure. It does need updating, and the staff members under Mrs. Odamo have been involved in this. As we did in the Presidential Park School, we want the staff to have what they want and what they need as much as possible, which is, which should be. And as a matter of fact, on the Presidential Park Committee, the building committee, a number of staff members contributed, and they made significant changes to the drawings for the better. So hopefully, this will happen at Twin. I think we're well on our way. Thank you.
Yeah, I think so. In addition to that, also working in with the staff for faculty areas, and so they have a better area for lunchtime or break or whatever they need, you know, with bathroom, we're pretty close to that. So we're also, you know, we're looking at every aspect. Basically, looking at it like we're going to redesign a building with a shell and just really modernize it.
Mr. Presenter?
I'm fine, thanks. There we go. It's obviously overdue, you know, the repairs there, and especially with the ventilation that was brought to our attention dramatically during COVID. You know, that there wasn't a proper ventilation in there. It's the only building that's got air conditioning. But I was at the Golden Grad's 50, and people walking around, and some were out of town for a long time, 20, 25 years, and they could not believe how beautiful that building is today. You know, it was as beautiful as it was back in the day. And I don't know if the district knows how much money we have to put into that every year to keep it pristine. It's old building, the masonry effloresces, is that the way to say that? Moisture goes in, causes damage inside. So this project will extend, this building might last longer than the high school. Who knows, the way it was constructed? And it's going to be state-of-the-art. We're going to have room in there to do STEM projects. Right now, it's too small to build robots and what have you. And the community that attends that building deserves everything that's going in there. So they're going to be right up there, state-of-the-art as every other building in our district. And we're going to get a good bang for the buck. $82 million, sounds like a lot of money, but that is, that building's going to go another 50 years. You know, who knows? So, you know, thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Freddie Williams?
Good evening. When, with approval, what is the start of construction and the estimated finish of the construction for it?
Good question. So the process, after we get the referendum, it usually takes six to 10 months for the design work to take place. And then after that's done, then it goes to SED for approval, another six to seven months, probably eight months. So we're looking at two years, a year and a half, maybe two years to start. And then probably by 2025, 2026, it should be completed. It's going to be a process, because we're, you know, we're basically renovating existing walls and trying to put duckwork in there and things like that. So it's going to, that's what's going to take a while.
Mitch Williams?
Thank you for the presentation. As far as with the building, it's very important. But I want to hear from Camille as far as, because I'm talking about the people that's actually going to be in the building. From what I remember, it's a much smaller school, but yet it's than Monhegan, but it's 100 more students. So, but if you're looking at, by you looking at it, Camille, because you're the principal of that building, is this something that would be, something that we can accommodate that'll really improve that site for the kids and teachers that's going to be there, as well as for the community, because you're there, so?
Yes, it will improve dramatically what we have here. So we've been working, we've had two meetings where the staff, we have a team of teachers, we have David Coats, Barbara Curra, Kevin Leonis. We have both internal staff, as well as district staff that have been part of the committee to look at the plans. So it's what we needed. So it's long overdue. We're very excited about it. It's going to give our kids a state-of-the-art experience. So you're, we look at this, so just thinking about the potential for what it's going to be and how the prior kids are going to feel going into that building. So I think it has everything we're looking for. So no complaints from me on the plan.
Paula?
Thank you, appreciate the presentation. I don't think anyone at this table is more thrilled than I am. As you all know, my feelings about Twin Towers, having had both of my children attend Twin Towers and just watching, just being part of the process and the conversations about opening up that drop-off area and putting in that extra opening in front of the school was exciting to me. But I want to talk about the concept of community schools and the inception of that concept as bringing services closer and more accessible to families, especially in school districts like ours, that are our small-city schools. Although we have some public health facilities within our district lines, the accessibility is not as, it's just not as accessible to families. So this has been a concept that was presented at New York State School Boards as far back as eight years. The concept of community schools was brought to our constituency to connect the community to services in school districts that were underserved. And again, so I feel that this has been a process of bringing our community closer and building access. So that, I really do want to speak to my support of bringing the community, communities, the community school concept. So I'm very excited to see this happen. I know and understand that it is going to be a time, you know, it's going to take some time to get us from where we are right now to the finished product. And there will be some growing pains, there will be some challenges. And there will be some growing pains, there will be some challenges along the way, but I think in the end, it is what our community deserves. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'm surprised, though, Vince, when you were talking, that you didn't make mention of the beautiful auditorium. That auditorium certainly is a masterpiece. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Another question, Mr. Cohen?
I just want to follow a nice tone already. I just want to follow briefly, I want my statement out, in fact, which was Superintendent Creed for explaining, explaining the whole issue of the community health of services.
Thank you. Explaining the issue of the community health services, the whole idea of bringing some essential health services really go back to the influenza pandemic in the 1920s. There was a movement, social reformers like Jane Addams, Bell Moskowitz, who by the way was the first Jewish American to chair a presidential campaign, Alfred Smith actually promoted that idea for sanitary reasons, health reasons. And I think it's important that what you mentioned, that it's services that require the parent's consent or knowledge, very important. And I know that what I'm going to say may sound crazy, either left or right field. I want it to be kept that way, that our district will always be transparent, keep being informed with the parents that, because I know if sometimes you listen to the chatter of the folks in Albany, they may want to try to bring other things. I could see some folks in Albany wanting to bring abortion to a school district. And definitely I want it to be, I want our district to be a place where children live, learn and play, not die. So I hope that we will always keep the parents involved, engage in a partnership and that then that will be, I think, a truly good success. And I appreciate the work the Cornerstone has done. I know it started under Superintendent Almora, who's actually at the beginning of his tenure, and I'm happy that that's coming to fruition.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mike. I'd like to move on.
Just one more thing.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Just one more thing. We have just a, if you can put the slides up for me. Just as we continue to move on our efforts, as Mrs. Odoma and I spoke about on October 7th, we are going to beginning, going to begin, excuse me, an additional opportunity where we prioritize scholar educator staff and community voice. We are going to be partnering with Tripod Education Partners, and they will work with Middletown community members, students, scholars, educators, families and community members to gather, organize and report out on survey data. So the survey that we're using through Tripod is a nationally recognized survey. It was developed in 2001 by Dr. Ronald F. Ferguson of Harvard University. And we will be putting out these surveys once the finalized version of the survey is complete. So we have created user work groups. And those user work groups include members of the community, they include educators, staff members from different bargaining units, students, families who have students enrolled in the school district, as well as families who are living in the district but don't have students enrolled. And so we're really looking forward to this opportunity to bring this survey to the district. We're meeting next week on October 25th and 27th. I'm hoping that there'll be a board member that will be joining us on that work group.
I believe there has been interest, yes.
Okay, great. And what'll happen is on October 25th and 27th is that we will have different questions set that are off of different stems, question stems, and we'll be choosing the final version of the survey that goes out. There will be a scholar survey that will be done on November 18th. There'll be an educator and staff survey that will go out and they'll have a week-long time period to do it. Each building will choose their specific date of implementation. And then there'll be, the family and community survey will be an open window from November 15th to December 15th. And then the survey data will be shared out at a board meeting in January, which will give us an opportunity to see the trends and themes that bubble up to the top. And then that will help us to create actions to move the district forward. So it's just sort of a little teaser into the process and we'll continue to share as we get a little bit further along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Creed. I'd like to move on to the business, the financial memorandum, number nine. There are five items that we need to have a motion on. The first one is the budget transfer, number six. I need a motion to accept.
So move.
I can join. I would like them separated, please. Sorry for interrupting, but didn't want that to go ahead without.
I have, do you want to make that as a motion, please?
I would like to put it into a motion, that they be separated. The agenda has them separated, so I think it was you guys that attempted to group them.
Just indulge, please, you know, this is. So the first item is the board-approved budget transfer, number six. I need a motion for that action item.
Don't move.
It is moved by John and seconded by Paula. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Number two, the acceptance, exception of the acceptance of the budget development calendar for the 21-22 school year. Moved by Vince, I need a second.
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 Second by Nicole. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Passes unanimously. Number three, the approval of the contract for professional services for ingénitaries, illustrious mathematics for the 2021-22 school year. Ms. Creed, that was a mouthful. I have a motion moved by Vince, and I need a second.
Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I now need an approval of the contract for professional services for quarterly education for the 21-22 school year.
So move. Second.
Moved by Vince, seconded by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item five, the approval of contract for professional services with KGND Architects on call professional services for the enlarged city school district of Middletown.
So move. Second on that.
Moved by Vince, was that seconded Paula? Seconded by Paula. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the approval of the special services memorandum, number eight. That was for the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special Education. I have a motion from you, Vince, seconded by, seconded by Paula. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. We have approval of the MOA with the directors and the supervisors. MOA, for those in the audience, it's a agreement of, a memorandum of agreement. Any discussion? I need the motion, sorry.
Don't move. Seconding it.
Hear anything down this way?
We got it.
Mitch or Freddie? Any second or?
We got a second.
Oh, we got a second? Okay, sorry, John. Hearing none. Any discussion? No.
Can you explain this?
The MOA?
This is a memorandum of agreement to realign a position in the district supervisor's contract, putting it in the right appropriate salary grid. So we needed them to agree on it, the board approve it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes seven, one. We need, I need a motion to approve the additional election inspectors for the 2021-22 year as presented. I need a motion.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Crescendo. Any discussion?
Yes. In asking questions about the election law regarding election inspectors, I inadvertently discovered that a board member has been our chief election inspector for several years, and that is supposedly on a permanent basis until this board chooses otherwise. I'm not here to embarrass anyone and I'm not going to name names. However, in my opinion, this may even be legal, but I don't think it's appropriate, the optics, and I don't make decisions based solely on optics, but the optics are not good, and in my opinion, it is highly inappropriate. And I think that the election inspectors process, I did some research today, according to New York State school law, the Board of Ed gets to decide that, and I think it needs more discussion. So I'd like to make the motion that it get tabled, but if not, then I just will, you know, not support that vote.
Mr. Crescendo?
I don't, I don't think I quite understand your point. You've mentioned that there was a board member here?
There's a board member who is an election inspector, meaning that board member gets to supervise the counting of the votes for that board member.
I appreciate that, but there's not a board member on this, on this motion here?
No, but they were hand-selected, and I want to discuss that.
By who?
By the board.
By us?
No, I was told, I sent out an email today, but I don't want to name names or, because I guess they're considered personnel, so we could take that offline if you want, or, but I don't intend to support that until we have further discussion.
Mr. Perino, do you have a statement?
This is news to me. I'm not aware that in the school board elections, there's a board member who's an election inspector.
Can you just repeat what you said? I just couldn't hear all of what you said.
I'm not aware, that's news to me. I'm not aware that there's a school board member in the school, that's an election inspector.
Okay, maybe there was an error. I emailed our district clerk today and she named you, Mr. Perino. I don't mean to call you out.
Me for the school board election?
Yeah, she said.
No, no, no.
Excuse me.
Karen Clark, do you want to answer that?
She's trying, she's trying. Mr. Perino was, voted to be the chief election inspector to oversee the entire election because each school board needs to have one person to do that. That does not mean he counts votes. Any school board member or any member of the public at all may be there while the votes are being counted. It is just a, basically a formality as to a person who oversees the entire election. On tonight's agenda, these are just election inspectors that I need to run the polls the day of the election. These are people who will be sitting at the table, and as people come in, they will be checking them in, giving them a ballot. The reason that I need more is because we're doing a special election. Some of my election inspectors or poll workers, as they're also called, don't drive in the winter, so they're reluctant to agree to a December vote to work. They normally work for our May vote. Some of them have decided because of COVID, they are no longer going to work for us or any election, which is their prerogative. They may have reasons that, you know, I am not aware of, but they are no longer doing it. I always need to make sure, according to law, that I have three people at the table checking in, people coming in to vote, and there are two people who work the machines. So the names on tonight's agenda are just people that are going to be at the tables checking people in.
So when I asked the questions earlier today, I asked quite a few questions, I'm just pulling that up on my computer here. I asked how many election inspectors we need legally speaking, and the answer was we need three people and two, which you just said, but we already have 17 of them. And I'm just wondering, how many were on the master list that you were provided?
Many. There were, we have, we need 15 people because we have three poll sites.
Okay, so we already have seven, but there were many names on the master list. How were these particular names hand-selected?
Some of these people have been working for us since before I came, who have been working the polls for us. Some of the people, if I need somebody, the poll workers will say, oh, I've worked with this person, you know, check with the county if they're on the list. They don't have to be on the list to be a table worker. They need to be on the list to work the machines. So a lot of it is word of mouth. Someone will call me and say, hey, I'd like to work for the school board election. Okay, as long as they, you know, are resident of the district, they can do that. So it's not like, there's no, there's really no rhyme or reason to it. Either they've already been working the polls for us, or they have been referred to us, or they have contacted me saying, I would like to do this.
Right. But how many were on the master list, is what I want to know?
From the county?
Yeah, that you.
I couldn't even.
And then there were only, out of that, there were only about five that were selected or six? I don't remember the number.
The ones that are on tonight's list are ref, they were referred to me from people who currently work the polls.
And we are only voting on those names that are on this list tonight?
Which seems not random and a little unusual to me as a board member. My other question is, is that the chief election inspector, according to what I read, is not typically a Board of Ed member, although it's legal.
According to our attorney at the time when we were doing it, he said, if you would like to have a board member, you can do that. There is no law saying that you can't. And so in, I believe it was 2018, that's what was decided and voted on.
And does any other Board of Ed member take issue with the fact that that person might be supervising the election for their own election? Not that I'm saying anybody would do anything wrong, but it just gives the optics of inappropriate.
You don't understand.
A point of order, please, a point of order. We're drifting all over the place. The fact that we have, what's the title, what's the title?
Chief Election Inspector.
It's not on this, it's not on this vote here. It has nothing to do with this vote. Can we, can we call the vote, please?
My point, Mr. Crescendo, is.
You've made your point.
There were several names.
You have made your point.
No, I'm not going to be censored and silenced. Please don't censor me, Mrs. Tobiasin. I have a right to speak.
And you have spoken, and we have heard you.
I want to conclude with my point, that I do not think it is appropriate that we hand-select our inspectors.
That's fine, we heard your.
Very good. Thank.
I would like to call the vote.
She has a motion that has to be voted on.
I lost that. There is a motion on the.
Your motion again, please.
My motion was to table it, but it doesn't seem that.
Second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Gone.
So it fails.
Mr. Tobiasin.
May I go back to the motion to approve the additional election inspectors for the 2021-22 as presented? There are one, two, three, four, five, six names on there. Mr. Perino's name is not on there.
Madam Chair?
I would like the motion first, sir.
Was there a motion made on this yet?
I did, I thought it was tabled.
You have a discussion going on?
All right.
Say something?
Yeah, I just want to say something briefly.
Okay, so now we have discussion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I don't mean to cut you off.
We took the vote, yeah. Go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, and I'm like, Madam Clerk, yes, for the interest of the public, TV land, computer land, and over here, the school district pays for the election inspectors, right? Oh, I'm sorry, there you are. The school district pays for the election inspector. I'm trying to mask cover this up, okay? And the only reason I bring that up is, it's again, referring to the folks in Albany. They love to give unfunded mandates. There's something called, a wonderful agency with a lot of good people called the Board of Elections in Goshen. I'm in the position that the Board of Elections budget should cover elections. That's something I brought up last year, and I hope that we'll have sanity in Albany and save our taxpayers and our district some of the bucks we could use better for other reasons. Let's all have a seat.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Oppose.
It's six two. Item E is the approval of an update to the instructional calendar for 2021-2022. I need a motion, and then we will discuss as we heard previously, but I need a motion to approve the update.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Vince, seconded by John. Ms. Creedon, or?
All right, this, this change is made, so the high school family conferences were scheduled for November 2nd. That's Election Day, so it's just moved a week later to November 9th to allow families and staff to have the time to go vote on Election Day.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the change? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. If you look on your agenda, I believe it's items F through K. These were items that we voted on at the reorganizational meeting back in July. The reason that we need to revote is because our superintendent retired, and we have an interim superintendent who needs to approve any of the items, conferences, budget transfers, certification of the payrolls, et cetera, et cetera. So I need a motion to accept that change.
I, I want to have them separated, Mrs. Tobiasin.
May I please get the motion first, and then we have a discussion, and we can go from there, please? I need a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I want to have them separated because I plan on voting no on two of them. That was all.
You, you approved all of these in July, and now you're saying you want.
I have a change of heart about two of them. I feel that in July, I should have made a different vote, and this is a different person, and that's why it's on the agenda. And we have a whole different situation here. So yes, I do plan on voting no on two of the items.
Does that, yes, our parliamentarian?
Kevin.
Does that require a motion? And a second?
Probably yes, no?
They were separated on the agenda. It's you who wants to group them.
No, I was going to group them all.
Yeah, Vince.
All right, so I will, and I apologize to the audience. This is my second time this year, so I, I do apologize. I feel like I'm, there is a motion to approve, to delegate the interim superintendent of schools, the authorization to approve attendance at a conference as funded in the current school year by any employee, officer, or board member of the district for the 2021 school year.
Don't move.
All right, I just want to make sure that I don't.
You got it.
Okay. I have the motion. I have any discussion?
Our school finances have changed.
Okay.
Costs have gone up for payment, things like that.
It is a budget, it is budgeted though, so if it goes over usually then in the past.
We didn't have budgeted for our superintendent to retire and have to pay a different financial load.
Thank you for your discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oppose.
I now need an authorization to approve budget transfers. This motion is for the approval to grant the interim superintendent the authorization to make budget transfers up to the amount of $5,000. I need a motion.
So move. Second.
Moved by Vince, seconded by John. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. I now need a motion for the approval of the interim superintendent to apply for grants in aid, both state and federal. I need a motion.
So move on that.
I move by Paula, seconded by John. Any discussion?
Yes. While grants are always free money, and we welcome that, of course, as a district, and most people think of that as good, there are often many strings attached to the money that we accept. And some of the grants are backdoor opportunities for our administrators in government to push educational agendas for comprehensive sexual education, critical race theory, or any other possible thing you could imagine. And for that reason, I think we need to discuss a process for how we go about choosing as a district what grants will be applied for. So I might be the minority, I might be the only one who feels this way, but I plan on voting no or, or tabling it, so.
I have a motion on the floor, and the motion is not what you're saying. The motion is to approve the interim superintendent to apply for grants in aid, both state and federal. You are adding to that, so it would be entirely a different type of motion. This was the motion that we voted on July 1, so I will continue with, the motion is on the floor. Any discussion? You had your discussion, is there anyone else?
Madam Chair, I believe what that, what my colleague is trying to say here, that not that we don't want our interim superintendent or any superintendent in the future to apply for grants, but there needs to be a local, a transparent or open oversight, if I used the right word, so that we know what we are applying for, because there are some plans are grants, or like, or even when a college offers a student, we're going to give you a $5,000 scholarship. What's attached to it? What are the conditions? What's coming with it? And I think that's important. I think we've done very great with the grants, and I know Superintendent Eastwood, I was an innovator in that, and want to continue that, but I think those are legitimate concerns that my colleague is raising, and I will have to, I agree with her. I'm not against the interim, our interim superintendent, and in fact, I'll be her first cheerleader to apply for grants for our district, but I think the concern being raised on my colleague is about the strings.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, just, I think that the, most of the federal and state folks have the same thinking that you're bringing to light, and that although the Board of Education would grant me the ability to serve as the administrator to sign off, in many, many cases, it is required that the Board of Education also sign off before a grant application is submitted, and in also many cases, if it is impacting a collective bargaining unit, it requires their association to sign off on that as well. And it has been our longstanding practice to come to the Board of Education and present an idea for an application for a grant and seek your desires prior to application. So I would agree that it is important to continue those practices. Thank you, Mrs. Houston.
Rose?
So I'm calling for the vote. All in, oh, Mr. Perino?
It's been my experience that just because we give the superintendent the right to, to go after these grants, doesn't mean we have to approve them.
Right, and accept them.
Right, it's just that when I proposed the idea of having a curriculum committee earlier this year, because of, that was what was on my mind, or at least that was one of the things, that idea was shot down by the board. So that is why I will be voting no tonight. It's nothing against you, Mrs. Creedon, I just think that we need to have a closer look as we, we apply for grants. Thank you.
So I have the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Seven one.
Nay.
Six two. Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the certification of the payrolls.
So move.
And that again is for the 21-22 school year. I have a motion by Paul, I believe, and a second by Vince. Correction? You guys are really keeping me on the, on my toes. Any discussion on the certification of payrolls? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. The next one that we need to discuss is the approval of the corrective action plan management letter as presented. The audit report found no significant findings for this year. I do want to add that. So I need a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Paula. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. The next is item K, I apologize there again, has to do with approval of change orders. Mr., thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Bartlet? Mr. Perino?
That's fine, I discussed these with Mr. Bartlet during the week, but go ahead, Bill. Go ahead.
Good evening. Is this on? Okay, I couldn't hear it at first, sorry. So we have two change orders. The first two change orders are a compilation of a bunch of smaller items that were done, so I'm going to read through those, and then the others are individual items. So this, this first list of change orders is at Presidential Park, and the first is to raise an existing unidentified casting in the main parking lot. Also to remove an existing pavement, regrade and pave the lower level building access. Remove and replace the existing, existing shade structure canopy, and install a holdback post to hold open the vehicle gates, and as I said, those are at Presidential Park. The next change order is to remove a retaining wall and concrete piers discovered beneath the sidewalk. Replace the ballards adjacent to the gas meter. Remove and dispose of existing light pole foundation. Install under drainage at the playground area walkway. Lower an existing conduit to accommodate the new curb and sidewalks. Remove an existing sidewalk at the Bedford Avenue exit and install subways and pavement. Those are all at Truman Moon Elementary School. The next ones are individual items. The first is to remove an existing, remove and replace the existing basketball hoops at Truman Moon. To remove and replace the existing concrete stairwell and metal hand railing at Truman Moon. To provide stained block to the newly paved asphalt tennis and basketball courts at Mon Hagan. Provide stained blocker to newly paved asphalt walk, walking track and game area at Presidential Park. Provide stained blocker to the newly paved asphalt four-square and hopscotch layouts at Truman Moon. And to relocate the underground lighting conduit at Presidential Park. And the last one is for the fire alarm system at Truman Moon, and it was a change order to increase the wattage at the speakers to increase the volumes as needed in the hallways. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Hearing none.
It's pretty standard, necessary.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, Mrs. Clark. Item L, and I'm going to refer to Mr. Tuttle on this one, the approval of the sequel resolution.
So move.
I have a motion by John and a second by Vince. Mike, you want to just?
So this is a type-two SECRA, where there's, it identifies a type-two SECRA versus the type-one we did last meeting. There's no additional expansion of the current building or, or the infrastructure being modified. It's just a simple roof replacement, so it's deemed a type-two SECRA, and that's what we're voting on tonight.
And that's for Truman Moon?
Truman Moon roof, yep.
Thank you. We had a motion and a second. I need any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, Mrs. Clark. Approval of resolution and notice for calling a special meeting.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Blumenau.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gomez. Any discussion?
Want to just mention what, what the special meeting's about?
Yep, so the special meeting is a meeting that, it's actually the day of voting, so Tuesday, December 14th is a special meeting, and that's what this resolution looks at.
It's for the, the December 14th vote. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Item H, or excuse me, item M, N, the resolution of necessity. It's a motion to approve the resolution of necessity as presented. And that was in our board docs and the files. Any questions? Any, I need the motion first.
So move.
Moved by Vince.
Second.
Seconded by Nicole. Any discussion?
Rose?
Did you have a question?
Maybe just a sentence or two that, what that is for the public.
All right, so the, the necessity is just outlines that the Board of Education is aware of what we're doing, and they're voting on the need for this expansion.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And last, I need the approval of the bond resolution for the capital project.
Second.
Moved by Vince, seconded by John. We'll need a roll call for that, please.
Mrs. Blumenau?
Aye.
Mr. Crescendo?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mrs. Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Perino?
Aye.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Aye.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously. Under committee reports, you have to put up with me for a few more minutes. We held a audit committee meeting back on October 6th. At that time, the minutes from the June 16th meeting was accepted and passed. We also reviewed and approved all of the weekly claims reports from June 14th, June 28th, July 6th, 12th, 19th, and 26th, August 2nd, August 9th, August 16th, August 23rd, August 30th, September 6th, September 13th, and September 20th. We reviewed and we approved the treasures report for June, July, and August of 2021. What I, and then we had the exit conference. What I, and then we had the exit conference with our attorneys. I'm going to ask Mr. Tuttle if he would comment on that. I have extensive notes from that meeting, if any board member would like.
Okay. So every year, we have an audit by an internal auditor, and the, our fiscal year goes from July 1st to June 30th of the next year. And so what it does, they review all our revenues and our expenses, and they look at all our internal controls on how, if we're following policy for purchasing, if we're doing bids correctly. And they also look at all our reserves. They look at our health medical benefits. And so they look at everything that we do fiscally, and then they report out on that. And this year, I think was probably one of our better audits, and thanks to our treasurer and our staff over in the finance department. They do a really good job considering all the situations we have with COVID and people working at home coming in and not getting into the, so we had a whole bunch of different situations going on this year. And more specifically was the procurement of items and not coming in on time and getting carried over into a new year. So they've done an excellent job in helping us get to where we are fiscally. And so we had a really positive audit, and thanks to the board and allowing us to have the reserves and the funding to keep moving forward.
Yes, the audit was very positive.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that was stressed, I think, Mike, you can agree there with me, that we have to be careful, because two years from now, the federal aid goes away. If it goes away, we are going to need some of the reserves, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Going back, though, what I failed to do, I hope Pastor isn't watching. I'm going to get a C minus on this meeting.
You're doing a great job.
On the audit committee, what I need from you is a motion to accept the minutes of the June 16th, 2021 audit committee.
Shall move.
Moved by Vince, seconded by Paula. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. As a side note, we welcomed Freddie to his first meeting with the audit committee. I hope we didn't overwhelm you, because it was rather lengthy, and the auditors were pretty detailed on the reports. So I thank you, and I thank you for your time. Do I have any other committee reports?
Yes.
Mr. Perino, and then I'll go to you, if you don't mind.
No, it's an honor to yield to you.
Well, thank you.
Stay with your colleague.
Yeah, we had a facility committee report on Wednesday. Mrs. Hewson, myself, and Barbara Kerr were there along, of course, with the Director of Facilities, Bill Bartlet. I thought it was a good meeting. Mr. Bartlet spoke about all the work that was done this summer, and another thing, the work came in under budget. All the projects came in under budget. As a matter of fact, we were able to do more air conditioning work because of the savings in the previous air conditioning work. So good for you, Bill, doing that. In Carter, we did flooring, sinks, heating pipe upgrade, because we were having problems in Carter with the heat flow during the winter season. Truman Moon floors and the Univens were replaced. There's site work on Presidential Park. New playgrounds at Monhegan Middle School, tennis courts and basketball courts, same school. Truman Moon, again, pavement work. We had the MHS addition. There was a closeout on that. And we're in the result of that this evening, the new media center. On and on. There's going to be a, there's going to be additional work going on as this fall. Currently painting the upper-level classrooms at Truman Moon. The heating system, all heating systems being checked to avoid problems. Of course, you always have unanticipated problems. That's why we have some of the, some of our so-called reserve funds, because if a water heater goes at, for example, the high school, it's not like replacing a water heater at your home. They're considerably more expensive than that. Again, we're replacing air conditioning units in the MHS nurse's office. Snow plowing equipment is already being prepared, and we have a new, the head groundsman, we're developing replacements for opening when possible. So in other words, we're bringing some of our staff in earlier, and we're bringing them in overnight, so we can, we can get the schools as clean as possible. Barbara Kerr, as I mentioned, was at the meeting. I think she contributed greatly. She is a nurse practitioner. She talked about, again, the faucets at Tin Towers, and that some of the restrooms need replacement, and she wants to review with our architect, the designer, the health suite. So I'm so happy she was able to attend the meeting, and that's pretty much that committee meeting. And our Director of Health and Director of Security, Lenny Zapka, we're scheduling a meeting, when, Monday, the 26th, is it?
Tuesday.
Okay.
Tuesday, the 26th.
Tuesday, the 26th, all right. So good, it's at 11:00 a.m., and invitations have been sent out.
Thank you, John.
Good.
Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, with respect to the Fair Funding Committee, I want to welcome Mitch Williams. He's a new member of our committee. Mr. Williams, in his tenure here on the board, the beginning of his tenure, has demonstrated to be a voice of conscience, reflection, and I think he'll be a major strength to advancing the cost of fire funding for our school district. And we'll be talking further about that. And as was put, as we indicated in the last two board sessions, we are in the process of setting up a forum for the community at Middletown High School, I believe it's going to be December the 1st, on what is fair funding. I'm going to let Ms. Hewson, who's been working very diligently on that, to share more information.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. On the evening of Wednesday, December 1st, our Fair Funding Committee will be hosting a night to engage the community in a forum or town hall to welcome some lawmakers and subject matter experts to speak on the topic of fair funding with our community members, with questions they may have pertaining to the who, what, where, when, why, and how, as to school funding, and how it relates to the federal government, New York State, and all of the members of our enlarged city school district of Middletown Community. So it'll be a nice opportunity for us to speak. The speakers will be discussing and answering questions from their own points of view, but not limited to how are our schools funded, why does New York State owe our district money, how do unfunded mandates hurt our taxpayers and unfairly hurt our schools, and how can you, as parents and community members, make a difference? It will be televised and available for replay on MIDI TV. The event will last approximately an hour and a half to two hours, and we would use any remaining time to answer questions posed by our community members. And there will be an opportunity for photographs and light refreshments in the school lobby after the event. And our goal is both to inform and empower our community on how to advocate for fair funding for our schools, and bring easy understanding of these issues to our constituents in layman's terms. And if you plan on attending, we welcome you. All of our board members, please, please come. We would love to have you here. And our invited guests in our, of course, for speakers, include our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Tuttle, who is our finance expert, Assemblywoman Eileen Gunther, who has tentatively accepted. I'm still waiting to hear back from Assemblyman Colin Schmidt, who just has a small fraction of residents from our district. Unfortunately, although Senator Michael Marchucci did tentatively accept, he had to end up declining our invitation. But I'm hoping some kind of crazy event will happen, and he'll end up being able to come. Also speaking will be an expert on the subject matter through the eyes of Bocis, and also our former board member, Ed Estrada, the Orange Ulster, Bocis Deputy Superintendent as well, Deborah McBride Hepes. So we're looking forward to seeing you there, and we hope that all of you will be able to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Paula?
Thank you. This past Monday, I represented our board at New York State School Boards Association annual business meeting, where we voted on resolutions for topics of discussion and aiming at making sure that our schools, schools are funded fairly, among other topics. And I just wanted to remind my colleagues on the school board that this coming week is the New York State School Boards Conference, which has now gone virtual. And so it is opened to, you know, it is open to all school board members. And please, of course, this is the year that I was, that I was given a free registration to save the board about four, I think it's a $450, $450 certificate that we had. We don't have to pay that, because it is free. So I hope that you will take a look at the school board, New York State School Boards, their agenda, and what courses are available. It's a really great opportunity for education. So even if you consider, even if you can sit down a one or two workshops, I think you'll find them to be very well organized and beneficial. And it's all virtual. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Moving on, and I'm going to repeat what I said in the beginning of the meeting. I take responsibility for the change in the agenda. Many instances, I felt that sometimes board members had committee reports, sometimes, not committee reports, I had community reports, and sometimes we were silent, as some of us went down as the table. I thought it was more polite to move the opportunity to hear from our public up to the beginning, so I moved it basically where recognition's. And I have to be truthful, sometimes I wasn't sure what I was saying was a recognition, or if it was a community report. I combined them. That was not to curtail any board member sitting at this table, the opportunity to talk. So I will now start with roundtable and community reports. Please do both this time, and we can discuss with the board if they would like to continue with that format, or if they want to retrieve back to the old format. I'm going to start--
Clarification, we're going to do four minutes on--
I'm not timing anybody, Mr. Crescendo, this time.
Okay. So, but can we do the one part, the--
So you want me to do--
--community reports, and then roundtable?
Fine.
Because they are two very different things.
Fine.
Thanks.
I'm going to start. Do you mind, Freddie, if I start with you? So I guess we could start with roundtable, and then we'll go to, if that's okay with you, committee reports. Freddie?
So we are doing roundtable first.
Please.
And then community reports after.
Please.
So what I have to say is, I look forward to progress with complete transparency within our district. Let's not let politics take priority over our scholars and also our staff. That's the, I lost myself. I'll read that again. I look forward to progress with complete transparency within our school district. Let's not let politics take priority over our scholars and staff that are helping build and mentor our children. That's it.
Thank you, Freddie. Mitch?
Like what Freddie's just saying, I think it's important that we continue to stay focused on the main thing, which is the kids and the families, as well as our educators. I mean, we just got to make sure that we're all working in concert for the betterment of the community.
Thank you, Mitch. Paula?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who spoke today, as I have each time for the past nine years, sitting here welcoming the opportunity to address the board. And when I, before I was a school member, it was important for me to have a voice at the microphone, and I completely respect the fact that those of you are coming to the microphone with concerns. And we are listening, and we are discussing those issues, and we are not sweeping things under the rug. We are actively having conversations about how we can be better. So I believe that we are all dedicated to making, making this better. I have had full confidence in our school district for the systems that have been in place. That doesn't mean that they can't be improved. So I accept that, and I just want you all to know that that is how I feel. So thank you again for having the courage and for your heartfelt words to our board.
Thank you, Paula. Vince? Comments?
Yeah. Okay, I got three things. I thought I heard someone from the community say that she was worried that there would not be an opportunity to address, if I understood her correctly. That'll never happen. I think the mistake that, I'll say it's a mistake for myself, that we moved that opportunity up and down agenda. We got to keep it in one spot, so that everybody's ready for it. And you're always welcome to come in and talk. We've never denied that right to anybody, and we never will. We started a very, very small baby step with the superintendent's search. We had a workshop sponsored by the New York State School Boards Association last Thursday, and they kind of gave us an idea of what we need to do. It was a three-hour-long workshop. I got a lot out of it. Mr. Perino and I are the, actually, the only two people on the board here who have actually done that type of superintendent's search, and that's only because of our longevity. So I guess the next step, we have to talk with President Williams. The next step is to find an agency. We have to decide what type of agency we want to use. We have a choice of using Bocis, the Chief Executive Officer, or would that be, he's the district superintendent, I believe. He's a representative of the State Education Department and for Orange County, all the districts in Orange County. And they provide that service to find candidates for us. But the other option is a national search, which in my opinion is much more complete. You'll get people from all over the place. And we'll look at a number of agencies, and they will come in and we'll interview them. And which brings me to my next point. In order to do that, one of the most essential parts of that process is that we have to have our district goals in place. And through no fault of anybody sitting here, what happened, you know, the other things took precedent, we normally do that over the summer, in August. We have what's called a board retreat, and the superintendent and his or her staff outline where we are now and where we expect to be in June. And it's a lot more complicated than that. They go through every step of the way. So we haven't done that yet. We scheduled it. It has to be done very, very soon, because when we do find an agency, one of the first things they're going to ask is what is our, what are our goals? Because any superintendent of value is going to want it, going to want to know what this district is, and do they fit in? They're not going to walk into something where they're not comfortable. So we have to present them with our goals. Let's see, what was the other? Well, I think I wrapped it all up into one. So it's going to be a process. It's going to take a while. Again, the first step is going to be the agency that we're going to use. And this, again, is going to include everybody. There's going to be focus groups from every aspect of our, of our district, of the community, every aspect, including students. So we'll get started with that, and we'll always keep you informed of where we are with the process. Thank you.
John?
As Mr. Crescendo said, it's not an easy process. As Mr. Crizenza said, it's not an easy process. It's a very complicated process to hire a superintendent. And as Vince also said, we went through the search with Dr. Eastwood and we came up with a very good superintendent. Nobody's going to like every superintendent, believe me. I've been through a lot of superintendents. We had 10 superintendents in 13 years. Most of the time I was on staff, by the way, and nothing happens then. You spin your wheels, you go nowhere, you go backwards. So that's, we're not looking for someone who's here as a, as said in baseball, for a little cup of tea. You want someone who has, is willing to commit to this district. So Vince, you're on target with that. Sometimes, you know, the roundtable and the community reports, they sort of blend in with each other. But I'm going to give it my best shot on the roundtable.
All right. So I'll move on to Mr. Gomez. Roundtable will start over again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bring all my remarks now. There's just four issues I want to address. Some of these are issues I've been reflecting on and our community has also been bringing to the table, not just in the last few meetings, but during the course of the last several years. First, with respect to the Special Education Department, and my colleagues know how I feel, I am very livid, disgusted, and disappointed. I don't care how great a person may could be as a technocrat or administrator, but the first quality of a leader is servicehood. A true public servant sees themselves not as a boss or a tyrant, or pretend they know how, to identify, but you should know them by their fruits. It's how you treat people, how you treat your staff, how you treat your parents. Not just saying that it's difficult, but showing it. Where's the beef, as they said back in 1984? We have a unique school district. There has been an increase in children's special ed. And darn it, our parents deserve respect. Okay? I don't want to hear no more about how a certain person is Joan of Arc when I see the exact opposite. And not just, and again, not because we've heard it in the last two, three, four meetings. It's been a pattern. I believe there's time for a change. I will go as far as asking for a suspension would pay, but I believe there's time for a change in that department. I'm totally disgusted. Okay? And to tell me that everybody who speaks in the microphone, 114 or something, they deserve no credibility? If that's the, I think it's the other way around. I come from the court world. When a family court judge hears one person blame everybody else and they're the shining light on the hill, that's the person who's lost credibility. So I believe there's time for a change and I hope my colleagues would appreciate it. I'm not the kind of person who likes to single out, point out anybody, nor do I like it. It's not comfortable. But I think our parents, our children deserve better. I think our districts made great strides, but how we treat our community, and when I say our community, not just the faithful that have come here, but also those who can't make it, who are in TV land as well. When I say TV land, are they on, I mean, they're looking through their media TV online to be clear. Another issue that's been brought to my attention is the misuse of emails by students. I want to ask our administration to look into it. I know we have a great system in our district to make sure that when kids go online for computers, they don't go in the wrong place. But if I hear parents, and Sharon, I'm going to forward to the administration, some of emails, the parents forward, the administration could address it, children using vulgarities with other kids, something's wrong. We need to address that. There has to be some controls in place. Parents, they're minors, I don't care if they're 18 plus, they're still minors, should have access to their kids' emails. I don't care whether in high school or a younger grade. So I would ask the administration to look into it. I will be forwarding some stuff. It will be of interest and is concerning. And I've told the parents to also reach out directly because that has got to stop. No mother, no father should go on the email and see something's wrong. As a dad, when I saw at some point one of my kids getting a communication that was out of line, I suspended the phone privilege. Or my wife did. She's the disciplinarian more. But we took action. And I think that we, and I know and I trust our administration, I know that our superintendent will be on top of that. Okay. Then the other issue, we've had an ongoing discussion over having a curriculum committee. I would suggest that we consider having what I will call an academic excellence committee. The goal will not be to micromanage or take away from administrators or departments their responsibilities in selecting, purchasing a curriculum. But it will allow parents, along with teachers, to look and review what's coming down the pipeline, what's being presented, whether it be scholarship opportunity, grant opportunities, or even, or books. Because there are things coming down that sometimes parents, and I would say not even administrators are aware of. Stuff that may be of concern that many parents feel does not go with the morals and norms they teach their kids. And I think it's important to be aware, again, not to embarrass anybody, but to work collaboratively so that our children can learn good civic values, can see themselves as the future of our country as well. I've had, one of my children in minor grades informed me that he was told, actually upper grades, that we don't celebrate Thanksgiving anymore. It doesn't count. I'm sorry. That may be the opinion of a few and I respect every one of you. I don't agree with you, Paula, but I think you're right to say your views. But I think most of us still believe in Thanksgiving. We still believe in apple pie, God, country, and family. Okay? And I respect those that think differently and I will protect their rights. But we need to have our community values that we have, our values of faith and family respected. And I think, and ensure that there's academic excellence. Okay? There are great works of literature that maybe deserve study. One of my favorites was Alex Haley's Roots. And I know there was little controversy with that because of issues of plagiarism, but nonetheless, it's an epic work. Maybe that should be part of our curriculum. And all the great other classic literature. So I think it's important that we consider that and involve the parents. I think parents, kids belong to their parents. They're the gift to the parent from above and parents should be informed and aware, not learn after the fact. Okay? And again, I'm not blaming anything. I think it's a good idea. Again, I'm not proposing that we have a committee to micromanage. I would be the first against it, but I think just to get together and discuss would be a good idea. And also, I know, and I thank Mr. Crizenza brought up that we had a workshop. I would suggest that we consider, in addition to the community groups that we do, that we maybe have a community committee that will also be engaged when it comes to interviewing candidates so that they could engage in the vetting process. Not, again, so members of the community. I mean, because one thing the community's saying, and I don't care where they live in Presidential Heights, in the Meadows, they want to be involved. They are the stakeholders. So I hope we consider that. And so that way they could meet every candidate, want to not ask questions and share their views with the district. So those are some things I want to bring to the attention. Of course, my feelings on special ed, the concern about the, of the use of emails by our kids, which could be dangerous, of course, and in addition to the other aspects, as well as having like an academic review or excellence committee is something I think we should work on. Again, not to micromanage. No, there are responsibilities by law that belong to administration. But also to have the parents engaged. Okay? We've seen a lot of controversy and debate throughout the country and I think it's good that we don't see some of those things repeat here.
Thank you, Kevin.
And one more thing, I'm sorry. I'm grateful for the communities that are speaking up, the parents who are engaged. There's a time and season for everything. This is the season and I will never support any attempt to restrict. Let freedom reign. Oh, as Al Smith used to say, the answer's for the ill of democracy. It's more democracy.
I think Vince wanted to comment. Kevin?
I don't want to jump in here, but part of that process is not only, not only will groups talk to the finalists, but the superintendents are going to want to interview us. They're going to want to talk to the community also and board members. So we're talking about total transparency.
Right. Nicole?
I'd like to start out by joining my colleague, Mr. Gomez, in sharing his same concerns over the special education and the climate and culture in our schools. As you all know from watching the meetings, anything that's passed must be done with a majority. So at times, I will be honest, I feel like a sitting duck here. The staff should be consulted. I join my colleague in supporting a community-based committee for the superintendent's search, including the faculty and staff, parents, of course. And in my niece's school district, they actually included students and the students contributed and did their own interviews with the superintendent up in Vermont. We need, you know, if you want to have your own sidebar, go ahead.
I apologize, Nicole. I just asked Mr. Crizenza if we didn't say that students would be involved with the survey. So that's all I wanted was a clarification.
But you lectured the public about how rude they were for talking and you're doing that now. I would be happy to. Thank you, Mrs. Blumanow. So to continue, for the record, and I've already said it, public meetings are the people's meetings. Anybody can get caught up on a technicality with regard to an open meetings law, but as Americans, we have the right to protected speech during public. Are you kidding me?
No, I am not.
During public comment, your right to speak is protected by the First Amendment. What does this mean in practical terms? According to constitutional law, a public body cannot limit your speech based on its content, meaning the members of the public body cannot limit what you have to say because its members do not like what you are saying. Its members have already heard it or the speech is critical of the board or government or whatever kind of meeting it is. I want to bring to your attention that I have been going to community meetings every Monday afternoon on Route 211. As many of you may know, I was in a very bad accident in February. I broke five bones and I'm still recovering, but I'm doing quite well. And I had a lot of really great nurses who took care of me in the hospital. I'm very grateful to them. And they have been fired because of the governor's tyrannical mandates. And those mandates don't just affect our nurses at hospitals, they affect our students here in the school, they affect our teachers, they affect our community. So I'm against these tyrannical medical mandates and I stand as a board member for your freedom of choice, whether you are a parent, student, teacher, custodian, food service worker, clerical staff member, leader, and board member. I stand for your right for free choice. I was very criticized the other night by a fellow member for standing at those protests and I'm proud of it and I will continue to do so. And I welcome you to join me. These mandates are not based on science. They are an attempt to steal your rights over your own bodily autonomy or your children's bodily autonomy. And two days ago, I was informed by members of this board and members of administration that I will be mandated and subject to medical testing if I, that's fine, if I do not provide information for which I am protected by the HIPAA Privacy of Medical Information law. So once again, I'm being censored. If I do not comply, I am told that by the second week of November around Thanksgiving, I will not be allowed to perform my job as you elected me to do so. I want to ensure my constituents that I will not comply. It is a violation of my constitutional rights and yours when you get asked, because believe me, that's what's on its way. They are coming for your children and whether or not you agree or disagree, it's your right to choose. And if I have to take legal action, I will. This has already happened, just for the record, to a state lawmaker in at least one state and it's happening. A state lawmaker was locked out of his office because he refused to provide whether or not he was vaccinated. He's not allowed to do his job that he was elected to do. If that's not tyranny, I don't know what is and that's going to happen to me in a couple weeks. So if you don't see me at these meetings, the reason why is just what I told you. So I've been singled out. So I'm going to close with this because it's beyond words at this point. A local doctor, Dr. Zev Zelenko, who practices medicine in Monroe, which is part of our county here, said the following, and I posted it online. He, I'm going to ad lib a little bit to shorten the time, but we are at an inflection point in the war against tyranny. The narrative is shifting and momentum is with the side of good. Now is the time for perseverance, fortitude, and absolutely no mercy. We need to eviscerate, pulverize, and extinguish the forces of evil so that not even one nanoparticle remains. We do this, not in any violent way, but by peaceful acts of goodness and kindness and returning to the basics of morality and being human to one another. Have absolutely no fear, be ready to sacrifice everything. Because we, and this is my part, we are privileged to live in the greatest and most important time of human history. I will add that our country is the best country because we have individual freedoms and our redemption has arrived. Rise up for goodness and justice. Parents, I implore you, please do your homework when it comes to making a decision for your children and your family. The media is not giving you the truth and your true informed consent matters. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start back over again. For now, comments. Freddie?
I'm going to speak on a event that is happening this Saturday right here at Fowler Field, Middletown Youth Sports. It's a free program for all Middletown students, which consists of, right now, flag football, basketball, and boxing. My constituent here, Coach Mitch, he's doing an excellent job with boxing in the city of Middletown and beyond. So it is a fundraiser event. It's a free program. Here's a little timetable. It's 11:30. The kids will be doing flag football combine. It's, I'm sorry, grades three through 10. That's 11:30. 12:30, 1:00 PM, we will have the Middletown Police Department versus the Middletown school Camille is expecting a couple touchdowns out of you. I heard you're an athlete. All right? And so that goes from 1:00 to 2:30. And then after that, starting at 4:00, there's a D1, the little guys tackle football game at 4:00. Then at 6:00, there's a D2 tackle football game. In addition to that, Kevin Gleason let me know that at 9:00 PM, there's going to be a soccer event for, I think, the young ones down on the field also. So there's a lot going on on Saturday, starting at 9:00. Also, I just wanted to mention the people involved. So Middletown Youth Sports consists of Mr. Mitchell Williams, Mr. Michael Levann, and Everton Brown. I'm going to mention, It Takes a Village is another sponsor. Mitchell Williams again, Anthony Williams, Yaya Williams, and Mr. John Merchant. Then we go down to the Middletown Police Department. Chief Wachua has been very intricate in this process. I want to thank him. Now we go to MHS. Dave Coats, Kevin Gleason, Amy Creedon, I want to thank you guys. And for the D1 and D2 tackle teams, I want to thank Robert Smith and Miguel Dosson. And I'm missing, I'm sorry, Miguel Rodriguez. And I'm missing a couple of names from there, but they've helped out a lot. This particular event is, we've been moved, taken strides, and this is under that umbrella that helping, helping the community, school system, and police department kind of, you know, bridge these gaps that are missing at times. But the police department, I want to commend them with the district and the community. So it should be a good time for all. So it should be a good time for all. Bring out your families. It should be, it should be fun. Thank you.
Freddie, would you just repeat what's being held at?
Right here, Fowler Field, at the high school.
Yes, I just wanted to.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitch?
Hey, just to add on to what Freddie was talking about, we have a lot of things coming up for the holidays. You know, if you celebrate Halloween and, as well as Thanksgiving and Christmas. First, I just want to commend and just thank Kevin Witt for maintaining the district website. And I encourage families to get on there, because we have a lot of great stuff going on. I also want to commend Amy Creden for putting together, as far as with the agencies, the various agencies, to make sure we're not stepping on each other's toes, but we're doing what's best for the community and the kids. The Middletown Police Department, the Wallkill Police Department, as well as the Orange County Sheriff working with Because It Matters, as well as 845 Elite. And it's a bunch of different agencies, us kind of communicating together to make sure we spread it out, so all of us are not doing the same thing. So if you have something for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you have different things for your kids to do, you know? So once again, I want to please commend Kevin, as well as Amy, for just coordinating that thing. So I encourage everybody to get on there. Also, I want to commend, as far as Brittany and the Leaders Program that's run out the YMCA. I encourage you to get your kids involved in that. It's wonderful. As well as Kev from the YMCA. He has the basketball. He has the six- to eight-year-olds and nine- to 12-year-olds. And for you guys who's a little bit older that still play basketball, 30 and over program, if you still, you think you got something left at the YMCA. Of course, I have to commend, as far as Ray Lynn and Nikki at the Parks and Rec. We still have Wednesday basketball for free for the kids, 7 to 9, as well as boxing Friday night, 7 to 9. And it's free to our Middletown School, people from Middletown. Also, I'm going to commend Anthony Williams for the My Brothers Keeper Program. It's the initiative that he has started a few years ago, for which Freddie's one of the mentors, Pastor John is a mentor. And recently, I became one of the mentors. So it's just things that we're excited about, that we have going on in the community. And I encourage you, you know, to call. If you have some kids, call and see something, because maybe they're not into basketball, maybe they're into something else. See exactly what these different places have to offer. And once again, Kevin has it all in the website. He puts it all up there, so, you know, you could just choose. So I'm just something that I'm excited about. And that's about it. Have a good night.
Paula? Nicole? Kevin? John? I don't think we can hear you.
The Golden Grad Celebration at the high school. Vince was there, and Nicole, myself, represented the board. There were a number of people who made this successful. I want to give a lot of credit to two paraprofessionals at the high school, Laura Di Pasquale and Rick Carmen Bonet. They did a lot of the legwork on this. And Kevin Witt was there taking photos. Bill Wilcox, Patty Leo, two graduates of Middletown. Bill worked with the district for years in the print shop. Members of the district administrative staff. Lauren was here tonight, Dur. Novell Kano, Ray Kao Conce, and Amy was there. Food service staff, that Camille was there. It's just a very nice time in the, everybody was impressed with the building because it did change since they were there. We, we've put, in the last five years in that building, I'm a bottom-line guy, we put about $14,600,000 into that building on various items to make it, to make it secure for the kids and the staff. So it was a good time, and many of these people were from Middletown. And we're going to count on their support on the end of December referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Vince?
Don't ever put me after Mr. Perino, because he covers all the points. You left out one thing.
What's that?
My sister-in-law was there also.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. But it was fun to watch them, because, like I said before, a lot of them haven't been in town in a very long time. So they're going around the building looking for their lockers.
Yeah.
But they've changed, obviously, over the years. But, you know, when they did a little presentation about the referendum, and they were impressed with what was going to happen. So it was a good time, and I really, really enjoy that. Thank you.
Before I close, I just want to say that I'm very appreciative. I want to thank everyone for your patience with me tonight. I'm very appreciative of it. And I also hope Pastor that I didn't disappoint you. It's a lot tougher job than you think it is. And I'm going to ask all of the board members, as you know, we're supposed to keep Thursday night. I'd like you to keep next Thursday night. I have not discussed with Pastor, but hearing comments tonight, I think that we probably need a workshop meeting to start pursuing the district goals, the board's district goals, as well as discussion on pursuing the search for a new superintendent. I thank you again. I'm very, very appreciative of you folks sticking here with me and seeing me through. Thank you.
My apologies, Rose. I have one more thing. Tomorrow night, home game, football game. We also have the D1 and D2 players coming out. So please, if you can, come out to support our kids. Please, we're right at the field tomorrow night. That's it, sorry.
Which field? Would you say it again?
Right here at the high school field.
Okay.
So it's going to be the varsity team, as well as the kids are going to be out there, too. Middletown Youth Football Team is going to be out there as well. So please come out.
Thank you. And good night.
Motion to adjourn. Do your favor.
Usually, usually I do that, so that's why I forgot, Mr. Gomez.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Vince, seconded by? Okay.
Good night.